Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of LaScata's Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 22, 2016. The meeting is now called to order. Please take a moment to silence your devices. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hansen?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair Burdami?
Here. Would everyone please stand and join Commissioner Birch as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America. As a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of LaScata strongly encourages your active participation in the public process with verbal and written comments. To speak on any item, please complete a speaker's card located within the benches and follow the instructions on the back of the card. If you haven't already done so, please turn the card into a staff member. That way I can be prepared to call your name in advance. Matters relating to agenda items will be heard during the itemized public hearing. Matters not on the agenda will be heard under verbal communications. We have desk items tonight for item number seven. Have commissioners had an opportunity to read the correspondence? Does anyone need more time? We do not have any requested continuances this evening, so I will continue on to subcommittee reports, looking to see if we have any subcommittee reports from members of the Planning Commission who also serve on various town subcommittees. Do we have any recent meetings? Vice Chair Kane?
The Historic Preservation Committee met today. We had one item on the agenda, 325 West Main Street, and staff had advised that the proposed changes to this contributing historic house in a historic neighborhood, that the changes requested were not in keeping with the residential design guidelines. The applicant received constructively what we were suggesting, and it had to do with design and materials, both of which were going to get in line with the guidelines. So with that understanding, the motion carried that understanding, and it was set to be approved by the Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Vice Chair Kane, for sharing that with us. At this time, members of the public are invited to address the commission on any item not on this evening's agenda. I do not have any speaker cards for verbal communications, so if anybody wishes to speak to us tonight, please come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, I will move on to our first item, which is a consent item, and that is approval of the minutes for the meeting date of June 8, 2016. Commissioner Erickson?
So, I wasn't in attendance at the meeting, but I watched the video because there was nothing better on television to watch. And commend my commissioners for their wonderful work in my absence, and don't know whether that's related to my absence or not. But I would note that for item number four, I believe that the vote was 5-0, not 6-0.
Well, I'm probably going to agree with you, because I was recused from item number four, and so if I wasn't there and you weren't there, that process of elimination and doing the math as well, I was also recused from item number five. So after viewing the hearing online, I can also attest to the accuracy of the minutes. So we will correct the vote. So with that correction, I will now call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Item number two, 649 University Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-16-022, requesting approval for exterior modifications to a commercial building on property zoned LM, APN 529-10-085, and APN 529-10-139. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Seeing none. Mr. Pradon, I understand you're providing us with a staff report this evening?
Yes, I am. Good evening, chair and commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of exterior modifications to an existing commercial building on the west side of University Avenue located at 649 University Avenue. The applicant is proposing changes to the building footprint, excuse me, is not proposing changes to the building footprint. The existing use, lot coverage, parking, and building height will comply with Town Code regulations. The proposed architectural modifications include multiple pilasters and a cornice centered over the new front entry to add depth and dimension and decrease the bulk and mass of the new roofed area. Additionally, the applicant is proposing metal awnings over all windows on the front facade to further contribute to the style of the building while complementing adjacent buildings. The consulting architect reviewed the plans, visited the site, and after two rounds of review, has no further recommendations for changes. The consulting architects' report are included in your packet this evening as attachments six and attachment seven. The proposed application is in compliance with the Commercial Design Guidelines and Town Code. Staff recommends that the design, or excuse me, the application be approved, subject to the attached conditions. This completes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pradon. Questions of staff? Seeing none? Thank you very much. I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission, seeing Mr. Kohlstad come forward. Please talk to us.
Okay, we're on. Good evening, everybody. As Mr. Pradon explained, this is basically an exterior renovation to this structure, to the building. We feel that the style that we're going for is representative of the, not only the immediate area and the zone, but also the use. We feel that this building now looks like some poor attempt at a strip mall. We don't want to pull any punches. We really don't like the look of the building at all. I think it degrades the look of LaScata's. And we feel that this is a much better design suited for this industrial zone. It's a warehouse use. We want to have more of a warehouse look. However, we are adding a lot more windows than there is now. And windows add detail, add life, and that's, you know, the heart of this building, is to open it up to the street. We've also brought in a little more of the retail office space. We're trying to orient it more towards the street side, so just to kind of, again, liven up this sidewalk a little bit and make it so you don't just drive by and don't want to look at the building. And again, we're not doing any changes to the use, no square footage added. We actually, this design is more towards the commercial guidelines and the spirit of making, doing 360-degree architecture. Right now, you've got a front facade that doesn't relate to any other of the elevations. And now, we are taking that design and carrying it all the way through, not only with materials, with details, with rhythm and fenestration. So we feel that this building, if it was built, if it was designed and presented today, would win out hands over, hand over fist against the other building. And I don't want to belabor the thing. I think it's a pretty simple project, and I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Kohlstad. We do have questions. Commissioner Hansen?
I didn't have any questions about the architecture, but there wasn't any discussion of the signage. And since there's a name on the building now, you know, that might come up for, you know, further review, but I didn't see it in the terms and conditions. If you could just comment on that, just to know what it would be.
We would prefer to do more classy signage. I don't think it needs to be loud. I don't even know if the existing signage conforms to the sign ordinance. There is a large lettered sign on the building on the Industrial Avenue side that says affordable storage. We haven't actually put in our signed application permits yet, so I can't completely answer that, but we're looking to be more classy and compliant.
I figured as much, and I realize it wasn't, it is not part of the approval process. I just wanted to kind of understand, because it's part of the whole package.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. I think the improvement in architecture is substantial, and I commend you on the way these renderings look and the 360 architecture. I think that will help the area quite a bit. I had one question, which was not about the architecture, but I believe it states that there is going to be reallocation of warehouse to retail space. Could you tell me about what is the contemplated use of that new retail space?
We don't have any tenants yet, but within the industrial and light mechanical manufacturing zone, we can have hairstylists, professional, you can do retail, you can do offices that are related to construction and maintenance. Right now, there's a current tenant that will be staying. He's LaScata's Alarm, and we're just looking to bring a few more small, very, it's in its small-time retail, not large box retail, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for staff related to that. Is a change in the tenant, would that trigger a conditional use permit?
It does not.
Okay.
So retail and personal service are permitted uses in that zone. So in the future, should they decide to use those for one of those uses, they would have to comply with that, the parking, which the proposal does, and then they'd have to comply with the permitted uses that are allowed there.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
I think Commissioner Hansen asks an excellent question. So I have a question for staff. What is the process, then, for the signage?
For signage individuals, it usually applies separately. If they're assigned permanent, through dealing with staff, we review it against potentially, if there's a sign program on the property, or if it's just by zone, the requirements for it, and we go through the process with them on that. It's usually never tied to the actual development of the building.
It certainly seems important, because it's a good-looking building.
So I just offer that the Commercial Design Guidelines have sign regulations specifically that the sign must adhere to. We do not bring signs before the Planning Commission unless it's a sign program specifically requested for that, and so they will be required to comply with the, both the zoning code requirements, as well as the Commercial Design Guideline requirements.
So it's not part of the ANS process?
It is not.
All right, thank you.
If I may comment on the signs, there is an existing monument sign that's right near the, it's perpendicular to the sidewalk, it's very close to the sidewalk, and it has the old shape of this architecture, the facade. We would modify that sign slightly, but we're, I've been told that we're going to continue to use this monument sign. Not on the building.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none. I now invite comments from members of the public, but I don't have any speaker cards. So would anybody like to speak to us on this particular item, seeing a card? Is that for this item? Okay. All right. Mr. Kohlstad, thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, since I don't have your card?
My name is Mark Mandar. I reside at 634 Industrial Way. Speaking in regards, our property is known as 635 University. The plans look fine. My concern is parking and the fact that we're converting rental storage space into warehouse. Essentially, it's office space, but it's going to be for LM industrial use. And I'm looking at the plans, and I see an addition of two additional parking spaces in the plans with roll-up doors, but, you know, my gut feeling is that nobody's going to really use those. They're going to be parking on Industrial Way or University. The business that's there right now, LaScata's Alarm, most of their employees park on Industrial and even as far away as Roberts Road. The parking down there is just a mess. And looking at the plans, I mean, it looks great, the windows and everything, but it just, I'm suspicious that we're probably going to be dealing with more conversion in the future. And that's my only concern.
Thank you, sir. Don't go away. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you for your comments. If you could be sure to turn in the speaker card to us. Thank you. All right. Mr. Kohlstad, you're welcome to come back up for another five minutes to add comments.
We are adding two additional parking spaces. One of them will be handicap space, and the other one will be, intended to be an employee parking space, not a customer space, and it's covered. So it's kind of like the employee of the month type of parking. Could be a nice parking space. However, everything complies, we're within the guidelines, and we are not seeking any additional conversion, nor will we ever able to be able to do that unless we could put parking underneath or on top of this building. So it's all calculus. It's all just pure mathematics where we are. I appreciate that it's a very congested and impacted area for parking, and we appreciate the neighbor's concerns, and we also appreciate his vote of confidence on the architecture. But I don't know if his concerns are something to be, that we would consider at this moment. That's all.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Kohlstad? Vice Chair Kane?
Mr. Kohlstad, were those two additional spots provided on any of the architectural exhibits that we received?
They are in all of the exhibits, yes. They're part of the package. What we have done is we've taken two of the...
They're on all of them?
Well, they're on every...
I couldn't find them on any of them.
I would just offer, if you look at sheet A2, and you look at the side of the building that fronts Industrial Way, you will see two additional spaces, one handicap and one next to it. Those are the two additional spaces that are being added.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, for pointing that out.
I'm good. I found it. But that's not part of the permitting process, that he had to have additional spaces or...
They did have to have additional spaces to be able to allow for the conversion or the opportunity to use for either retail or personal service up to the, I believe it's 924 square feet.
I'm going to guess that was two additional spaces.
The total turned out to be two additional spaces.
Thank you.
Any further, go ahead.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Barthas, he's the owner of the property, and he points out, and I have to agree with him, every time I go there, I never have a problem parking. It's the nature of this storage space, is someone comes for an hour or two, and they unload, and then they leave. You're not there all day long. The employees for LaScata's Alarm, there's seven employees that are there 24/7, well, operates 24/7, so there's two or three cars that are parked there all the time. But we have 10 spaces, so we always have, seem to have a parking space.
Any further questions? Seeing none? Any further comments, Mr. Kohlstad? You still have a little bit more time? We're good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The public testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed. Looking to commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion, and Commissioner Erickson has his hand up.
So I'd like to commend the owner of the property and his design team, Mr. Kohlstad, for the careful consideration they gave when they prepared the facelift for the building. The size, the mass, the color, the exterior styling was well-chosen, and it not only updated and refreshed the architecture, but it made the, will make the building much more consistent with the neighborhood, if you would, the industrial neighborhood that it's in. On that basis, I will make a motion to approve Architectural and Site Application S-16-022 that's requesting approval for exterior modification to a commercial building located on property zoned LM in the town. And I can make the following required findings to support the motion. The project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15301, and that the existing facilities in the project consisted only of exterior modifications in existing architecture building that will not be increasing in size, that we can make the required finding for the redevelopment plan of the central LaScata's redevelopment project area, that the proposed project is consistent with that plan, and is, and the subject property is designated as commercial, and the proposed use falls under the general commercial uses allowed in that zone, that the project and exterior modifications that are proposed are consistent with the applicable provisions of the Commercial Design Guidelines, and that based on the staff report and the testimony this evening, that as required by Section 2920150 of the Town Code, the considerations in review of an architectural site application have been made.
Is there a second? Commissioner Birch? I'll second the motion. All right. Any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the decision of the commission or their actions on this item?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, 252 Prince Street, Architecture and Site Application S-15-069, requesting approval for a technical demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence on property zoned R-18, APN 40732005. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Any disclosures from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
I visited the site. No, I didn't. I had incidental contact on another one. My guilt is coming out. All right. I have no disclosures on this one.
All right. Ms. Puga, I understand you'll be providing us with a staff report this evening?
That's correct. Good evening, chair and commissioners. The applicant is proposing to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new 2,479-square-foot, two-story home with a 600-square-foot attached garage. Pursuant to the Town Code, the maximum square footage for the lot is 2,639 square feet. The project was referred to the Planning Commission because it would result in the largest home in the immediate neighborhood with regards to square footage and FAR, in addition to creating the second two-story home in a predominantly one-story neighborhood. The consulting architect reviewed the plans, visited the site, and commented that the proposed architectural style would not be compatible in the immediate neighborhood due to the design and the scale. The consulting architect had six recommendations, of which the applicant has incorporated three into the plan set before you this evening. While there is one other two-story home located within the defined immediate neighborhood, the proposal would have a larger visual mass due to the amount of roof exposure on the front elevation. Staff recommends denial of the application based on the size of the home in comparison to those in the immediate neighborhood, in addition to the proposed mass and scale of the design. This completes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Puga. Questions of staff? Commissioner Hansen?
I had a question about the roof. There's a discussion in the staff report about the roof massing and the applicant choosing not to modify the, due to the issue that they wanted to have solar panels, and if they changed the design to what the consulting architect recommended. And then there's a statement about this expedited solar permitting act. So there's kind of two questions in that. One is that, would it be typical for our consulting architect to recommend a roof architecture that would not be consistent with being able to do solar panels, or is it just that they're focusing on the architecture relative to the rest of the neighborhood? And then my second question would be, if it turned out that there's an insistence of adhering to the requirements of roof mass, and they don't do the solar permitting, are recreating an issue for the town because of their intention to do solar permits?
So the answer to the first question is, the consulting architect is reviewing the plans based on the design guidelines and the immediate neighborhood, not relative to the solar. If you do look at the consulting architect's report, he did show them a different placement for the solar panels, and that was on the two-story elevation rather than on the garage. The second part to your question is that the commission has a discretion based on the residential design guidelines to ask the applicant to modify the roof lines to be more compatible with the immediate neighborhood. That section was included in the staff report simply for reference. Essentially, when we're dealing with building permits, that's where that section of the code would come into play.
So basically, you're saying that the consulting architect did recommend an alternate placement for the solar panels, so there wasn't a, no solution in this?
That's correct. He did, and I can bring up the page.
I think I did see it in there. I just wanted to confirm that my understanding of it was correct. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Seeing none. I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. I'm going to assume that you're Steve Lipert?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Mike's neighborhood. The shaded houses are the two-story houses. Unshaded are the one-story houses. We talked to the neighbors, the side neighbors here. Both did not object to Mike's proposal. We talked to the rear neighbor, two-story, did not object. We were unable to talk to the neighbor on this 241, did not answer the door. However, we would assume that the 241 would object, because they objected to the one-story proposal next to us. During our rounds, we did find three across-the-street neighbors who objected to Mike's design. It was based on blockage of views. Wasn't, what we gathered, was not based on square footage or the design per se. It was strictly blockage of views. So the city policy is maintain the existing neighborhood. The existing neighborhood is ranch. However, there's a big cost to that, and that cost is 40% of U.S. energy usage goes into buildings. Housing makes up the majority of the national building square footage. Ranch houses massively leak thermal heat compared to two-story houses. The reason for that is that the ranch houses have a high building envelope area compared to roof area. Ranch houses leak energy at the floors, and we have a raised floor, it's not slab-on-grade, and walls. In this case, with ranch houses, we have lots of proportionally larger window areas in there. And the roof. The roof is twice as big as a two-story home, as well as the floor being twice as big as a two-story home. That gives a massive opportunity for the leakage of thermal. In addition, it was built with no insulation in the floors, no insulation in the walls, no insulation in the roof. Hopefully, over time, the owners put insulation in the roof. One-story houses, because it has a larger footprint on the land, there's less area for landscaping. There's less area for absorbing rainwater runoff. Combined with the hardscape, and in this case, we've got driveways that go up, turn the corner, which means more area for driveways, combined roof, driveway, we have a lot of runoff that goes into city drain systems, and that ultimately means every 10 years, Alvisa gets it. Existing seismic, there is no existing seismic resistance. There are no sheer walls in any of these houses. There's going to be massive damage in an earthquake. The floors, the raised floors, are supported by 4x4 piers on blocks... The floors, the raised floors are supported by four-by-four piers on blocks that are directly on grade. They're not, there's not a real footing connecting, supporting the piers. And these piers are often just one toenail. Didn't meet code at the time. The neighborhood has massive widths of street, and they have these lollipop trees, which provide zero shading on the street, zero shading of the existing homes. You can literally fry an egg on, on Prince Street, and that, because you can do that, the air temperature is an extra two degrees above what would be normal natural air temperature. This is where I grew up. I grew up in this house. I used to play in this area. Played on the street. We had shade trees in Burlingame, and this is the Burlingame Hills. Mrs. Balkanis used to sit in the porch, watches. If you were to take these trees away, you'd get a view of the bay. No one would ever suggest taking these trees away. These trees help, besides shading the street, they help shade the houses. This was built in the 20s before air conditioning. We had natural air conditioning with these trees. Mike wants America to quit sending a trillion dollars to the Middle East. That's what we've done over the last 40 years. He wants to build a sustainable house. He doesn't want mile-long trains with tankers that carried frac oil from North Dakota. Mike wants to stop that, and he wants to stop it with his own house. And he does that by producing a house that's so well insulated, you need very little energy to heat it. And we had an example of this. Colonial America salt boxes. Two-story, insulated at the time with hay, but they didn't, they had a minimal thermal, minimal exterior envelope that cut down on the thermal leakage. They also used trees to manage the heat gain to the house. Summer shade, and in this case, winter, letting the shade go through. So this is Mike's first proposal. He's proposing walls that are twice as thick as the existing walls that are there. He has an extra three inches of rigid insulation outside the sheer walls to get maximum thermal insulation on his house. This is well beyond code. This is well beyond what's called for of code. He has relatively small window areas throughout all sides. He has vertical windows in which he can open the lower pane and the upper pane and have circulation go through the room. He proposed the solar panels in this area simply because these are pipe penetrations, plumbing penetrations. The consulting architect, and we mentioned that when we submitted our second proposal, you don't put solar panels over plumbing pipe penetrations. Over the garage, we don't have that problem. We've got skylights that are motorized with an automatic connection to the thermal, or excuse me, to the thermostat, and they open when it gets hot. This is the landscape plan for Mike's house. We have drought-resistant landscaping. We have pavers which allow penetration of water. We have shade trees. We're going to add a big shade tree on this side, but we will not contribute rain runoff onto the street. In addition, there is a overhead power line in the rear, because Mrs. Wu doesn't want to be close to it. We pushed the, the rear wall further up as opposed to the original house. The city has approved narrow walls, narrow windows in the past. This is our next-door neighbor. I don't know why this is a lousy slide, but you can't see through these narrow windows. Our windows will be recessed three inches because of the extra insulation that's on our walls. This is the modified version of Mike's house. We much prefer the original version, but we tried to accommodate the consulting architect's whims. That's what we call it. He wants a gable roof here. Doesn't add anything to the look, and we still have the pipe penetrations. Also, these things have to be cleaned twice a year. We'd rather use a one-story ladder to clean these things as opposed to a two-story ladder. This is at the side and rear elevations. Consulting architect wants a belly band on the side, side. We don't think a belly band enhances anything. Just for, even though you can't see through these windows, we've frosted them on the upper level. We could put a trellis in the rear. That's an option. I wish we could turn these lights off, but anyway. This is the view from 247. 247 objected to the ridgeline. He gets a view of this, of these trees, and we're, we're blocking it. Our trees, we're going to plant new trees in the front, and that will provide privacy and greenery that he likes on the front. This is 251. We weren't able to talk to this neighbor, but he doesn't get a view. 255, we talked to this neighbor. They object to blockage of the East Bay Hills.
Mr. Lippert, your time is up. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Lippert? Commissioner Hudes.
Now, thank you for your presentation. I'm particularly interested in the chart that you put up earlier that showed the two-story homes in the neighborhood. I wonder if you could put that back, because the, the staff report indicates only, only one home, and I know that we sometimes get into the definition of immediate neighborhood versus neighborhood, and so could you tell me a little bit about your rationale for this chart? And is this neighborhood, and, and what proportion of homes in, in there are two-story?
The staff could better define immediate neighborhood. We, whoops. We took a 200-foot radius from the property line. And within a two-foot, 100, a 200-square-foot radius, this is what they'll in. Somewhere, I think staff thinks immediate neighborhood is, is, you know, 1, 2, 3, and across the street, and 1, 2. I don't know if they include the rear houses on the property. But staff has a tighter radius. This represents a 200-foot radius.
Okay. So from, from your description there, I'm just trying to count the houses that are there. It looks like there are 17 homes within that circle, and it looks like six of them are two-story presently, and with the addition, it would be seven. So it would be six out of 17? Is that correct from your diagram?
We believe so.
Thank you. We'll have a discussion later about immediate neighborhood and neighborhood with regard to the meaning and the guidelines.
Vice Chair Kane, did you have a question?
Oh, if Commissioner Hudes wants to wait, I'll wait. It's not, residential design guidelines, which Commissioner O'Donnell and I helped write, are very specific that the neighborhood is 225. Two houses to the left, two houses to the right, five on the other side of the street. It's not a whimsical construction of staff. It's in the book. So I appreciate your radius, but when I, when I walked the street, I looked at the 225, and I found one story, one, they're all one-story except for the one on the, on the far right. What is it, 259?
Correct.
Which has a, like a bedroom over the garage-type configuration. But certainly, it's two-story, but just not on the scale of, of the subject project. That's the clarification I wanted to provide.
Vice Chair Kane, did you have a question to go along with that?
Did you know that? They always make me put it in the form of a question. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Lippert? Commissioner Hanson.
I wanted to ask about the square footage. In the same vein of the, looking at the immediate neighborhood, the residential design guidelines indicate that the, that houses need to be similar in bulk and scale and mass to the surrounding properties, and this proposal calls for the largest house in the immediate neighborhood. And I, I read the applicant's justification, but it was largely based on houses that were outside of the way that we define the immediate neighborhood in our own guidelines. So I just, I'm trying to understand why it's necessary to create the biggest house in a neighborhood, which creates all kinds of precedent, when there, you know, it's clearly not in the same bulk and scale and mass of most of the houses in the neighborhood.
The reason is Mike Wu is anticipating an elderly sister to live with him in Winnie, in another.
Mr. Lippert, can you talk into the microphone a little bit more directly so we can all hear you? Thank you.
As I said, he's anticipating a multi-generational household. He expects his son and family to live with him, to support him in his old age, and he's expecting an elderly sister to live with him. That's the program that generated this area.
Well, just to pursue it a little bit further, the next biggest house in the neighborhood is, is only 150 square feet less, so would 150 square feet make the difference? What difference would that make in terms of the size of the, I don't see that that would be less than one room usually.
As I say, we're proposing. It's up to you to dispose if you so desire, but this is the desire of the homeowner and what he would like to build. The regulations give a, a square footage that seems to be allowable, but then you seem to have a, a second recommendation that says that if your next-door neighbor doesn't have it, you can't have it.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Lippert? Vice Chair Kane?
Yes, sir. One other question on, you were discussing the town architect before Larry Cannon, and in disagreement with, with some of the recommendations he made. That brought my attention back to his letter. He takes a pretty strong position. I think he takes a pretty strong position in the letter. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood. The approach is, is very much counter to the residential design guidelines, and I'm, he may have done this before, but, he has about 13 highlighted items that would, where he's advising you how to become more in line with the standards and guidelines. What, do you remember your reaction to that? I mean, it's hard for me to get by this letter. How did you get by this letter?
We have, as I say, a different program. We're looking for the most energy-efficient home possible. He's into image. We don't think image should take precedence over making, solving real problems. And the problem in this country, the number-one problem, is energy. That's what we're trying to do. And if you want image, a 1950s image with, you know, that didn't care about energy conservation, that's, that could be town policy, but we're trying to suggest we need a new path.
Thank you.
Yes, if you could fill out a, I'm sorry. Your name is, that you want to speak? Are you part of the applicant? You are the applicant. All right. I'm going to need a speaker card from you, and if you could step up and announce your name and address for the record? I did get, that's Steve Lippert.
He lives where? His residence is where?
They don't have to disclose their residences.
They're all screwed up unless he doesn't want to do it. It doesn't have to, but you see, where's his goal here? Is he a parkset? Is he, where is he?
Well, I did ask for the applicant and their team to come forward, so I'm going to assume that he's part of the team, but if you want to identify yourself as you represent, Mr. Wu, or Commissioner O'Donnell, that might be helpful, and also if you'd like to give your address.
Sure. My name is Steve Lippert. I live at 985 Summerfield Drive in San Jose. Mike and I are friends, and I'm speaking for Mike.
Not an architect or an engineer?
I am an architect in five states.
Okay. So you're a licensed architect in California?
Correct.
And you're appearing as a friend?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Wu, please step forward and fill out a speaker card for us before you leave.
Can I fill up a call later?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, my name is Michael Wu. I live in Campbell right now. I'm the owner and architect of the project. And to answer Mr. Kane's question, consulting architect have a nine item comment, specific suggestion toward the design. I incorporate four to five of them, and, and it's all listed in the submitted document why certain item is not in compliance. The major design concept, I alter my concept to comply his suggestion. So the only minimum item which cannot be achieved, for example, the solar panel on the garage roof side, that's the only feasible space left after I convert all the roof shape to accommodate architect, consulting architect's suggestion. I don't know what, what, what else I can do.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Wu? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right. I will now invite comments from members of the public. Our first speaker is Sharad Sharma.
Yes, as you said, my name is Sharad Sharma. I'm at 247 Prince Street. You saw it on the map. I did write to the city in advance, so my letter is actually in the record, so I won't really go over my letter again, but essentially, opposing to this idea of two-story, that's really our main concern, not just the view, it's also the privacy issue, and which we're very concerned about. And some of our neighbors are here, and you will hear the same, same, same point of view from them. We have, personally have less and less issues with the, with the material being used and energy, energy efficient and so on is great, but it's essentially changing the way our street looks today. There are only four houses out of 30 on Prince Street which are two-story, and they're kind of made in a manner 50 years ago, which are kind of not really the way this stands out. So essentially, really what we're trying to say is that a two-story should not be permitted just because it doesn't conform to what we have today there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. We have a question for you. Commissioner Hudes.
Yes, hi. Thank you for your testimony. In the applicant's report, they stated that they visited with you on March 19, 2016, and that there was no objection. Did you meet with them in March, and did you have an objection at that time?
Well, I did, I'm sure we, we met twice. One was a few weeks ago, and one perhaps was in March. Essentially, we did say about the two-story and the height, and that was the first time I came to know. So Mike, whom I did not know before because he doesn't live there, so he introduced himself, and we started talking, and, but I didn't say that I have no objection. We were just basically silent on that.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no further questions for you, so you can sit down now, and I will call the next speaker. Julia Riegard. You'll have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, it means you'll have 30 seconds remaining.
I'm Julie Riegard, and I'm a neighbor. I'm at 255 Prince Street. I'm directly across the street. I'm directly across the street from Mike's proposed house. And I've got several concerns about the proposal, which I voiced to Mike before. And I've lived on this street with my husband and family for 30 years. And we're very, very concerned about the non-conformity of the proposed plan. It's primarily, as we've said, 1950s mid-century types of ranch homes. And the two-story home, we're very concerned about because it will block our view of the mountains and trees. Another huge concern for us is since we are in a one-story home, the one that was showed up on the screen is our home that was being looked at. And we have one story next to us on either side, on one side, and then a two-story on one side. And then if we do get a two-story across the street from us, the neighbors to our left said that they would also like to add on a two-story as well. So we would be surrounded by two-stories. So I'm worried about a domino effect of starting a trend of increasing the height of houses in our neighborhood. We really like our one-story ranch home style in our neighborhood. We like the feel of it. You really feel like this wouldn't conform with what we've got currently in the neighborhood. And we are concerned about being blocked in around us by two-stories. The neighborhood behind, or the neighbor behind them had stated that they were fine with the proposal. However, when we drove around the neighborhood, the neighbor behind him has their house for sale. So we don't think they have much of a vested interest in a two-story, even though they signed the agreement. So our, again, our real concern is the two-story and the size. And we are secondarily concerned about the modern nature of it, not conforming to the rest of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Riegard. Did you want to add anything more? You've got a little bit more time.
I think that's it.
All right. We do have a question for you, and that'd be from Commissioner Hudes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you again. I have the same question for you that I had for Mr. Sharma. And that is that in the applicant's report, they state that you were visited in October 2015 and that you had no objection. Is that your recollection? Did you meet with them in October 2015?
We did chat with them, and he did propose to us what he was planning on doing. And I don't remember saying if we objected or rejected. We were just listening to what his plans were.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riegard. Our next speaker is Evelyn Neely.
I'm the neighbor at 259 Prince Street. So I'm on the other side of Julie Riegard in the two-story house. And our store, our two-story house is sort of sunken down. So we're at the top of the hill, and most of the houses that are the two-stories are up on the, on the higher end of the slope. And then as the slope gradually comes down, they all pretty much become one-story houses. There's about four houses on the street, including mine, that become, that are the two-stories on that whole street. There's 30 houses on the street, but there's like four that are two-stories right now. And they're all, like you said, they're all pretty much about the same, you know, with that bedroom above the garage kind of thing. So our objection to it is that when they put up the orange sticks, it instantly like got really big, and it totally completely blocked any view we had of the hills. Okay? Now, he's discounting my, the concern that I have a view of the hills. That, and he didn't even know how much of a view it was. And because we actually did put up a bay window so that we could enjoy the view, and the people who we bought the home from said, this is what we really enjoy about this neighborhood, that we have access to this. You know, in Los Gatos, the homes are, you know, some of the, the tract that we live in is mid-century. It's older. And yes, there are problems with, there were problems with the, you know, with the energy efficiency. But on our street, people have turned over. They've, they've addressed many of those concerns. So for us, what our concern was mainly was that the impact of the actual visual of this piece of property that went from here, and also it doubled, and it was going to be pushed out into the street. And so I'm thinking, okay, I see his point. He wants to be energy efficient and all that sort of thing, and try to push us into a new era. But at the same time, I feel like, why does it have to be my street? And at the same time, why do I have to pay for what he's trying to do? So I also agree that he, the proposed home does not conform to the vast majority of the homes in the, in the neighborhood. Like, as I said, most of the two-story homes are located in the upper slope of the hill, so they don't disturb the view of the majority of the single-story homes. And we thought that, you know, we're not the only ones whose views would be impacted. And also, one concern would be, gosh, if my view is impacted, then, you know, our home value would be too. Not that, you know, when we bought the house, that was not something we even thought about. Thank you.
Ms. Neely, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Okay, sure. It's Evelyn Neely, and my husband and I, is Rick. It's 259 Prince Street.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Neely? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stuart Skerty.
My wife and I, Colleen, live direct
Sir, sir?
Yes?
If you could state your name and address for the record? I've got to get everybody trained on this.
No problem. Stuart Skerty. My wife and I, Colleen Rose, and I live directly across the street. We live between Julie and the lady that just spoke, the other neighbor, excuse me, and Sharad and his wife. We never, we did meet in March briefly. I've never met Mike. In the seven years I've lived there, I've never seen him. There's been little to no maintenance on the house during that period of time. It's been a rental. So the first time I met him was in March. He basically just said, hey, I'm planning on doing a remodel. I'm thinking of doing a two-story. In general, I think that people should be able to do reasonable ads and construction to their homes. But upon further review of the information that you posted online, my wife and I both have a number of concerns. View was not necessarily one of them, so that was a misstatement by the, by the two gentlemen. And the picture that was taken was taken from my front door, which I wouldn't necessarily stand at my front door looking for a view anyway. But I would sit on my rather large porch on my chairs and look at the view, which would no longer be there. So the picture that you saw from 251 Prince Street was taken at a bad angle. The biggest problem I have is the size and mass of the property that will be directly across from us. And I think the location of the solar panels is also an issue. The architectural style is probably the biggest issue. It doesn't fit the property or the neighborhood at all. It seems to be a modern architecture in a neighborhood of, of homes that were more ranch-style. And I think that's probably something that we, we disagree with. So basically, I'm following along with the recommendation that the Planning Commission's staff report on page seven of the report had recommended. Any questions?
I shall see. Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any more speaker cards unless there's anybody else in the public that would like to speak to us on this item. Seeing none? I will invite the applicant and his team back to the podium for five minutes to add any further comments about their application.
As I said, we're going to be planting street trees in front of Mike's property. As far as view, the view is going to be of street trees. So even if Mike were to do a one-story house, street trees are the view. In addition, the new one-story house that's next to us, I don't know if we could start up the PowerPoint again. But their ridge line, if we were to do a one-story with the, an equal height of the ridge line for that new house next to us, that ridge line would block the view of the East Bay Hills that's so treasured. In other words, this house is under construction, one-story. It's a little lower than our house, but if we took this house and put it on our lot, that ridge line would be a foot and a half or so higher. And that foot and a half would block the view of the East Bay Hills for probably these three residents. This resident could still have that view. The main thing is, we're doing trees. That's going to be the view.
As a matter of fact, I was told by, by Miss, the husband of 255. The view over here, if we, should we build two, a single story? And they said, we cannot build higher than the chimney, which is two feet higher than the existing roof line. And I have a flooding problem. That's why I have an uneven foundation settlement. So should I, if I bring the floor, finished floor higher, it will be higher than two feet current line, I mean, the current roof line. And then it will not be acceptable by 255. Certainly, it won't be acceptable for 251 and so on. And I think my hand is high.
You still have time remaining?
So I just, also, the two, Mr., 247 comments said that, he, I showed him the picture. He made a copy of the photo, model photo. And yes, it, you know, if you want to interpret it, that's contemporary. I don't think so. It's a little toward the contemporary, not completely. Because, look, imagine that, that's a composition shingle rooftop. And stucco exterior look. And after that, per consulting architect comment, I have no choice. I like this design, but I have no choice, change to that design. And that design, it matched the ranch style. It's on, on the wall. And I don't know how, how can, can you say that house is contemporary? I just don't get it.
All right. Are you done? Because we have questions?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Don't go away. I still need a speaker card from you.
Okay.
Commissioner Hudes has a question for you.
I actually have a question for, for both architects. I've heard something about what style this is not, not contemporary. How would you characterize the architectural style of this house?
This is in the ranch house, between the ranch house and the, a little toward, shifting toward the contemporary, but it's not contemporary.
Is, is a ranch house generally two-stories?
Depends. Some are two-story, yes.
Okay.
Ranch houses are a version of Frank Lloyd Wright's Usonian houses. And Frank Lloyd Wright is basically horizontal design. You can have elements of the two-story in the horizontal design. But the point was, is large horizontal windows, energy wasters. And it's meant for the prairie, where you got an acre of land. In an urban situation, we feel that being efficient two-story is much more economically feasible. And that's what we're trying to do.
All right. Commissioner Hudes?
I had another question, and this really has to do with designing a two-story house in a predominantly one-story neighborhood, which is part of our residential design guidelines 2.3.1. And while it contemplates that there may be two-story homes where there are also one-story homes in the neighborhood, it also says, go to the last sentence, that if a two-story house is proposed in this type of neighborhood, the house shall be designed to blend with the smaller homes. So I'm wondering if you could tell me in what way this home blends with the smaller homes? And there's some, there's some guidelines and suggestions about how to do that in, in our residential design guideline document?
We use the same roof materials. That is predominantly asphalt shingle roofs. The walls mimic stucco. We do not do large horizontal windows. We don't think large horizontal windows make necessarily what's nice about a ranch house. We do more efficient windows. That happens to provide privacy. And no one should, across the street, worry about privacy when you're 120 feet away with a very hor, with a narrow window. Our deal is that we should be fitting with urban design. And urban design is creating a street, creating shade trees, and fitting in that urban design. We think that continuing a mistake is a mistake.
Did that answer your question?
I want to have a follow-up on that.
Okay.
If I could.
Sure, of course.
Insert some detail on that. Some of the techniques that are suggested include combination of one- and two-story masses, roof segments separating the first and second floor facades, porches with eve height, similar to adjacent homes, second floor area contained within the roof form, and deep recessed entries, porches, and windows. I'm not seeing much of that. I see a little bit of the roof segments. But the other points, I'm really not seeing very much of. Could you correct me if I'm, I'm wrong on that, or in some way I've missed something in your design?
The original design had a deck at the front. And we took that out because we felt that the consulting architect wanted a different look. The pitch of the roofs matched the existing pitch of the existing houses. If we were to reduce the mass of the, of the upper story, it's conflicting with our program. However, if we were to reduce the mass of the upper story, the neighbors across the street would still object. That doesn't solve any issues with the neighbors across the street.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Lippert? Seeing none? The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Do commissioners have any questions, comments, a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have a motion. I move that we deny the architectural and site application based on the residence in comparison to those in the immediate areas defined by us and the proposed bulk, mass, and scale of the two-story residence.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? I will call a question. All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Item number four, 52 Oak Grove Avenue, Architecture and Site Application S-16-041, requesting approval to construct a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence on property zoned R18, APN 529-30-025. May I have a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Any disclosures from commissioners? Vice Chair Kane?
Guilt? Guilt. Guilt. I visited the site, had incidental contact with Mr. Tullis, but I did outrageously flirt with his two-year-old daughter. It was now missing. What happened?
He also mentioned a future governorship that he may be able to attain if he had my daughter's eyes, which I
If I had eyes, if I had blue eyes like that, I'd be governor by now. That's right.
Vice Chair Kane, you're really in trouble now. All right. Ms. Armour, I understand you're presenting the staff report this evening?
Yes. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. The project in front of you today is the proposal by Bob and Eleanor Tullis to add a second story to their one-story home. The existing house is just over 1,900 square feet with a 368-square-foot detached garage. And it is on a lot at the end of Oak Grove cul-de-sac with Noviciate Park on two sides of the rear. The proposal is primarily the addition of a second story to be 1,148 square feet. Upon initial review, staff had three primary concerns. The large oak tree that overhangs part of the existing house on The large oak tree that overhangs part of the existing house on the west property line, the fact that the proposal was a two-story home with a prominent two-story front facade on a street in a neighborhood that's primarily single-story homes, and that it would, as proposed, be the largest house on the law, on the, in the immediate neighborhood by square footage. So in reviewing the project, staff found in discussions with the applicant that they had actually located the second story in its proposed location because of the oak tree. And the consulting arborist for the town did go out and evaluate the situation and felt that with some standard types of conditions, the tree would be adequately protected during construction. The consulting architect was also involved in reviewing this application, the town's consulting architect. And they, he provided some revisions to the proposed plan to try and increase the consistency of the proposed architectural style and to reduce the impact of the two-story on the, on the neighborhood. In his results, as you can see in his report, was that he did find it was compatible with the neighborhood. In addition to that, in taking a look at the proposal, it is located on a parcel that only has two immediate residential neighborhood, uh, neighbors. And there are significant setbacks of the proposed second story from those neighbors, as shown in the, in Exhibit Four, where we list out the both existing and proposed setbacks. However, the proposal is still a two-story house with a two-story front facade and is still the largest house in the immediate neighborhood. Therefore, staff does recommend denial of the proposal. If the planning commission chooses to approve the project, staff has prepared findings and considerations included in Exhibit Two and draft conditions of approval in Exhibit Three. This concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Questions of staff? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for the staff report, that was helpful. My question was just on timing in terms of what we're looking at. You had mentioned that, based on the reviews of the architecture, that the applicant had reduced the size to two-hundred square feet. So given what we have in our staff report packet here, it says that the current size is three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-one square feet, not counting any part of the garage. And the next largest house would be twenty-nine-twenty. So was it originally thirty-three-hundred square feet and came down to thirty-one-hundred? Or, or, you know, am I?
Right. Originally, the proposal was approximately four-hundred square feet greater than the next largest house in the immediate neighborhood. The response to staff's comments in terms of calculation of floor area, not counting stairs twice, is one of the elements of how you calculate floor, floor area, so they corrected that. And they did do a little bit of a setback in response to the consulting architect's report. And that also reduced the square footage slightly, so that they are now, instead of four-hundred square feet larger, they are now approximately two-hundred, I think it's two-hundred-and-eleven square feet greater than the next largest house.
Any further questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have a letter where it says there are many examples of this two-story architectural style well-integrated in the context of one-story neighborhoods. Specific concerns include two things, which he cites. The large, single-wall plane at the front of the house, that hasn't been changed, has it?
It has actually. As you can see in the two illustrations on the same page of that report, in the first illustration, there's an area that's grayed out in their initial proposal. All of that was one plane. And he suggested taking the portion to the right, the right half of the front facade, and setting that back slightly, so that it would break that plane. And that is what they are currently proposing, so that there is that break between the front facade elements.
I looked at the story poles, of course, I guess you can't see that, because what I see is a large frontal plane. The second thing he says is the jam and trim between the paired windows seems too wide. Has that's been changed, too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will now invite the applicant and their team to step up to the podium, which I assume that you have done. You have ten minutes to address the commission, but let's start by stating your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Hi, I'm Eleanor Tullis, and this is my husband, Bob Tullis. I'm the applicant and the homeowner. So when we started looking for a home, we were engaged, and we used to cycle to Los Cados, and it was our dream to find a home here. We fell in love with the town. We loved the small, the small-town feel of it. We loved that it was dog-friendly. It just ticked all of the boxes in terms of where we wanted to live. And then when we found fifty-two Oak Grove, it was like our dreams had come true. The lot itself, sitting on an area where it was backing onto trees, is very similar to where I grew up in Ireland. I grew up on a farm, there was trees in my backyard. And that just, I, I fell in love with the house immediately. The house itself wasn't something that we were going to always want. We did want family, we did want to extend, we did want to develop the house, but the front garden and the back deck to us were the areas that we really fell in love with. So when we looked at remodeling, there was a couple of reasons that we really were looking for more space. As Commissioner Kane mentioned, we do have a daughter, and we have a growing family. Hopefully, we'll be able to add to that and have a little sibling for her. And with that comes the need for more space. Additional to that, neither Bob nor I are from the area, where we've come here and we've grown to love it, but we want my, my daughter to know and love her grandparents and our, our cousins and nieces, so we want some area for his parents and my family to come and visit us. I also work for a company where I'm required to work at home in the evenings and be on video. Right now, I'm doing that out of the corner of a bedroom, where I'm trying not to show the video of the bed. So having an office space would be really ideal. So that really was the rationale in terms of looking for more space. When we looked at the plot and why a two-story, firstly, Bob and I both grew up in very traditional two-story homes. So recreating that was something that was our ideal dream, to be able to have that two-story home for us to grow up as a, as a family. Secondly, when we looked at the plot, if we built on the same floor, on the ground floor, if we built forward, it would have impacted our neighbors much more so. Their view would have been impacted in terms of looking straight on to where we would have built on the ground floor. If we've built backwards, it would have taken away the beautiful deck where we get to enjoy the trees in our backyard. So just the lot itself, it didn't make sense to us in terms of building on the, the ground floor. Then when we looked at our neighbors and worked with both Jennifer, our architect is Jennifer, as well as our planner, Jennifer, making sure that our, we had no privacy issues with our neighbors, we specifically designed it where the second story didn't have any windows looking onto our neighbors. We specifically made sure that when we were looking at the shadowing, that it didn't have any impact on our neighborhood. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac, it was nicely set back. And in looking at those, those guidelines that, that you have, we tried to comply with all of the areas in terms of what the consultant architect said, putting the setback in, having the, the shingle going across, so really trying to make it, make it as feasible as possible based on your guidelines. On the size, I want to address that one. We did take the planners and the architects' considerations into account, and we did take it down from four-hundred to two-hundred. The last two-hundred, any plan we look at ended up being an impact on my daughter, daughter's bedroom in terms of size. And when I thought about me growing up and my husband growing up, we both had study tables in our bedroom, and that was something that I thought, okay, I have to get over my nerves and come and fight for this as a mom. I need, I want my, my daughter to go to school here, I want her to hopefully even go to college very close by and be able to spend her time studying in her room, and having that private space to her, for her was really important to me. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jennifer to, to talk about some more of the specifics around it.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Kretschmer, AIA. I am at one-oh-one Old Blossom Hill Road. I'm the architect for Bob and Ellis Tullis at fifty-two Oak Grove. You've heard Bob and Eleanor, or Eleanor, talk about what inspired them or what made them decide to go ahead and do this addition to their home. And what I would like to talk to you a little bit about is a little bit more about the property description. That property is on the end of the cul-de-sac because it is, it is completely surrounded by oak trees that are forty-five, fifty, sixty feet tall. So any home in the neighborhood would be dwarfed by the oak trees. They have a large area in the front of their home that is, a front area that is undeveloped, it is open space. And it is, the front of the house is seventy, almost seventy feet away from the neighbor's house. And with the second story, the way we did set it back, that's almost ninety feet. And I believe Jennifer has one of the site plans on there that shows the distances from that. So the house was really sort of setting it back and actually going up two stories keeps the house away from the view of the neighbor on the other side of the cul-de-sac, whose windows look directly into the open space. And we, we were very cautious and very looked into their concerns about privacy. So the only window that faces that neighbor is a small, high bathroom window. Sort of the process of how we got to this design style was when Bob and Eleanor came to me, they said that they wanted a very traditional home. They, they even sketched little things for me on, like little cute pictures. And when I went through the residential guidelines and the field guide to American houses, I identified that as a national style. It's either a gable end or an I-house type, type style, which is something we do see within Los Cados. The neighborhood context of that street, we call that in the residential guidelines informal urban, but it's really a series of mostly ranch, but there's an eclectic style there. There's multiple different types of materials on the street. There are some two-story homes as well as single-story homes. A lot of the single-story homes are actually, if you think about massing as, as in volume, it, it, they are almost more volumous than our two-story proposal because they're long, they have attached three-car, four-car garages on some of the homes. So even though they don't go up, they go out a lot more. Bob and Eleanor's property is the third-largest property in the neighborhood. Most of the other properties are much smaller. So we reviewed the zoning ordinance and the residential design guidelines, and I always talk to staff before starting any project, just to make sure, at the planning department, to make sure that what are the concerns and what would be the concerns? And we had identified the neighborhood guidelines. With the neighborhood context, we chose to show six houses across the street as well as two, three on the other side, because the two-two-five concept didn't really work with our neighborhood, but we wanted to show nine homes total, five-two-two. So we showed six-three. And when you get to one of the homes, I'd like to put this on there. So early on in the design phase, we identified this home in the neighborhood. This is eighty Oak Grove. It also has a two-story massing that goes pretty much straight up. It is very close, it's right on the setback, so the front of the house is about twenty-five feet away from the street. And so we felt, even though, again, an eclectic, informal neighborhood, harking, this one harking towards a Tudor style, but again, what we were looking at was the massing. There's another two-story home that is identified by staff in our neighborhood. It is far more contemporary. Sorry, I'm looking for the photo. This home was recently built. Bob and Eleanor's house has an L shape, and it comes out forward a bit. And we decided to keep that single-story massing where it comes out into the space in looking at how this neighborhood, or this house here in the neighborhood also comes So we did work with staff to try to develop this design. And when we engaged the consulting architect, as you noticed, if you read the report, he did have very favorable responses, and we did address all of his issues and redesign per his issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kreschner. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Would you just take me through the changes you made in response to his letter? In particular, and, and I know you made them, but I would feel more comfortable if you could take me through the frontal changes that you made.
So the initial design, we have the single-story section that comes straight out. And the initial design had, from that single-story part, went straight up. Even though it had the gable end, the wall adjacent to it was also going to be flush with the gable end. So that you see the gable end on the left side of the, the structure. On the right side of the structure, it would have also continued straight up. When he identified setting that back, we took the second story and that shed side of the, of the gable, we pushed back at least two feet and lowered the height just a little bit. So we still maintained the front gable end on the left side, that is part of this national style, and then made it the gable end with wing with the setback portion, and also put more depth into the porch when we did that.
Commissioner Hanson?
I was just wondering if you could comment on the, the sizing of the house. I, I understood your logic in terms of looking at the lots and everything, but the residential design guidelines are pretty specific that, about not, you know, being similar in bulk and scale and mass. And, and while it does, it stops short of saying you can't be the biggest house in the neighborhood, you understand that it sets a major precedent for anyone else. And since, as you pointed out, there's other houses in the neighborhood that also have large lots, and they may not have been developed. So what, my question was, is you mentioned seventy Oak Grove as a model, and, and we've seen plenty of examples of twenty-five-hundred square-foot homes since I've been on the commission where they have four bedrooms and an office. What about staying under three-thousand square feet or under twenty-nine-twenty makes it impossible for you to, to give them what they want? And I'd like to hear from the architect, so.
Okay. So we, we had a certain program, again, like Bob and Eleanor said, that they had this number of bedrooms they wanted. They wanted the bedrooms, the children's bedrooms, to be large enough to have a study area in addition to a bed and a, and a dresser. And they wanted to have a more modern master bathroom, like, and what I mean by modern is not in design, but as in being able to have a separate tub from a shower and, and that sort of sizing. The downstairs portion, we wanted to maintain as much of the integrity of that downstairs portion. We worked very closely in sticking with the demolition affidavit, so that we did not exceed that fifty percent rule. So we wanted to keep and maintain almost all of those exterior walls. So the only square footage that was added to the first floor was to straighten out a, a funky line, is only sixty-eight square feet on the first floor. So those sort of things kind of drove the house to getting to the larger size. We are well under the floor area ratio. If you look at the, the, the chart, the floor area ratio is only point-two-seven. But we also have the third-largest lot in the neighborhood. So that extra two-hundred-and-eleven square feet, when we finally decided to submit the design that way and come before you and the planning commission, which is, was the driving force for coming here, we decided we just needed that two-hundred-and-eleven square feet.
Okay. How long ago did you purchase the home? How did, how long ago did the Tullises purchase the home?
We purchased the home in two thousand and nine, so about seven years ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I had some questions about architectural style and how it fits into the neighborhood. In your letter, you describe it as a national style. In your testimony, I wasn't clear, did you say it was not national style? Did you say it was not national style?
No, it is national style, but there are different types of the national style. This is the national style and this is identified as gable end and wing. And as you see, we are also maintaining the same types of materials, the siding. This is, this is the national style as well, which is called an I-wing. And I'll identify. That's pretty much the drawing that Bob and Eleanor gave me when they first came to me to say that they would, this is the home they've always dreamed in, that reminds them of the homes that they grew up in.
Okay, so two follow-ups to that.
Yes.
Are there other national-style homes, either in the neighborhood or in Los Gatos, that would argue for compatibility?
Yes, I wish I had addresses for you, but there are national style. Oftentimes, the layperson would call a national style a stripped-down Victorian, a Victorian without a lot of filigree. So they're often misidentified. But if you do look at, I can tell you that, since I live near Short Road in Shannon, there are a few in Shannon that I can, that we can, but if you look around, even in Bob and Eleanor's neighborhood, you can identify a few of that kind of style. What's the street what you come in on?
Euclid.
Euclid. That have that type of style, siding, board and batten, the sloped roofs at 6 and 12. You do see that.
And then the other question is, the changes that you made that were recommended by the consulting architect to push back that facade, is that still consistent with the style?
It is consistent with the style in that it maintains that type of gable end and wing. Although we are putting the porch on another side from that specific example, if you look in the field guide of American houses, it identifies that in the language.
Okay, thank you.
Do the Tulissas have letters of support from the adjacent neighbors or any of the neighbors?
We don't have specific letters, but we spoke to all the neighbors in the neighborhood that you had identified and received their support. Nobody had verbally mentioned any issue with what we were trying to do.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none. At this time, I'll invite comments from members of the public. I don't have any speaker cards and I don't see anybody coming forward to speak about this particular item. So if you would like to add five more minutes to your application with any further comments, you're more than welcome to.
Yes, I'd like to let Bob speak.
So Eleanor did it so well, I don't have much to say. But I just did want to point out one thing, I'm a numbers guy, so I definitely took into account the numbers that you presented. And I heard what Mr. Kane said specifically about the guidelines and us going over by 200 square feet. The one thing that I would like to point out, though, is as Jennifer mentioned, we do have the third-largest lot in the neighborhood. But along with that, there are two other homes that have larger FARs than we do. And we kept that into, we took that into account as we were developing our plans to, to stay within the FAR, but also be, the FAR, but also be significantly lower than what was allowed.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Seeing none. The public testimony portion of the hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, entertain a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to make a comment because when I went out and looked at the property and looked at the story polls, I came away with a different impression than I now have, having heard the changes they've made and that. And there's no question, it's a beautiful lot, not surrounded by homes as, because of its cul-de-sac location and that kind of thing. So the reason I mention that is, when I looked at it first and looked at the story polls, I thought, wow, this really kind of jumps into your face. But having heard what they've done and where it's situated, I just wanted to say I'm much more, it's interesting, staff in one sense says, recommends denial, but that is not the language being used by staff, with all due respect. And I respect that. But, you know, I've got one thing in writing and I've got something else orally. And then we've got the architect, who was critical, and then he was responded to, and he says it's okay too. So I just throw that out. I didn't want to make a motion yet, but I'm much more disposed to this project than I was, for example, this morning.
Commissioner Erickson?
For the sake of not being redundant, I would have just said everything that Commissioner O'Donnell just said.
Thank you, Commissioner Erickson. Vice Chair Kane?
At the risk of being redundant, I would, what I was going to recommend to Commissioner O'Donnell is that unless there's further discussion, to make his motion.
I will. I will follow my colleagues' always considered advice. I move that we approve the application and we find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 1503 of the California Environment and Equality Act, which is more particularly described in Exhibit 2. We make the finding that the project complies with the residential guidelines, also in Exhibit 2. We would make the required considerations as required by Section 292150 of the Town Code for granting an approval of an architecture and site application, see Exhibit 2. We approve the architecture and site application S16041 with the conditions contained in Exhibit 3 and the development plans attached as Exhibit 8. And that we're approving the application with the attached conditions, and that's it.
Commissioner Hanson?
I'll second the motion, and I wanted to comment on why I will support the motion. I initially was very concerned about it being the largest house in the neighborhood, but, and that's something that we're always really reluctant to have happen because it changes the nature of the neighborhood. But in this particular case, the lot and the location of the lot justifies, as well as the applicant's compliance with the architectural consultant's recommendations, makes it, mitigates the concern about going a couple of square hundred feet over the second-largest house in the neighborhood.
Further discussion? Vice Chair Kane, you have a handup?
Yeah, I intend to support the motion, but we talk about precedent value or prejudice, and I want to stress again, there isn't any. There are no precedents. We have standards, we have guidelines, we have discretion. As the Director of Community Development is fond of saying, it is our purview to do this and that and the other thing. So having said that this is not a precedent case at all, and I've got the purview to do what seems to make sense, I'll be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Erickson?
I actually would consider this a precedent-setting decision if we move this motion because I think, based on the testimony, the report of the consulting architect, and the comments that my fellow commissioners have made, that this house does meet what is probably the most important consideration, and that's neighborhood compatibility. And because for me, neighborhood compatibility is not, while it does take into consideration size, mass, scale, and single-story versus two-story, it's much more than that. It's how the style and the sensitivity of design in a particular lot situated in a neighborhood fits to that neighborhood. And so I think this is one that clearly meets the neighborhood compatibility standard, and I would be quite comfortable with it setting a precedent for future decisions.
I concur with your comments regarding the neighborhood compatibility, Commissioner Erickson. To me, that's an extreme priority, so I would be supporting the motion. Any further discussion? I will call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on the actions of the commission on this item?
Thank you, Chair Badami. There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
All right, we are going to take a 10-minute break, so if we could come back at 10 to We're moving on to item number five, which is 26 Oak Hill Way, Architecture and Site Application S-16-032, requesting approval to construct a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence and exceed the maximum allowed floor area on properties owned R1D, APN 52934053. Ms. Armour, I understand you'll be providing, yes, with the staff report again this evening.
Yes, good evening again, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. The project in front of you is the proposal by Lana and Alexander Pesakovic to add the second story, or add to the second story of their home. The existing house is just under 1,100 square feet with no covered parking on a lot that has frontage on Oak Hill Way, but has particular access through a private easement across two other properties and out to Villa Avenue. The proposal is primarily, in addition to one side of the house, that it's 11 feet wide, as well as an expansion of the existing cellar space and some minor architectural changes. The review by staff of the project focused on four elements primarily. The floor area exception that's being requested to exceed the maximum allowed floor area on the site. The design, and we did have the towns consulting architect involved in that again, the setback exception that's being requested, and potential tree impacts. The floor area exception is based on the fact that the existing lot is a small lot for the area, and it is further reduced because the average slope of the lot is 14%. So when the average slope is greater than 10%, there is a reduction in net lot size in terms of how we calculate floor area. So because there is a steep slope at the back end of the lot, or actually technically the front end, because that's the side that runs along Oak Hill Way, that results in an average slope that is 14% and thereby reduces the allowed floor area for the lot. The area, the neighborhood, is actually a mixed, very mixed neighborhood, large variety in terms of the size of the lots. And so the proposal is not actually the largest in floor area or in floor area ratio. It also, this, a similar proposal on this lot was approved by planning commission previously, but never built. And there, the proposal before you tonight is actually smaller in total square footage than what was previously approved. So that's the floor area exception. The design was reviewed by the towns consulting architect. And in a second review, reviewing the changes that the applicants made, he did feel that his comments had been sufficiently responded to. The applicants are requesting a minor exception to setbacks. They are not touching the existing wall that is located in the setback, but they are proposing a small entry porch, which would technically put posts into a required rear setback. The non-conforming size of the lot does actually allow, in our code, allow the applicant to request reduced setbacks. And then the final element was tree impacts. There were some potential impacts, but reviewed by the consulting architect. And the protection measures proposed in the architect's report as conditions of approval should protect those trees sufficiently during construction. So staff recommends that the planning commission review the findings and considerations in Exhibit 2 and consider approving the project with the proposed conditions of approval in Exhibit 3. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Armour. Questions of staff? Vice Chair Kane?
Regarding the need for a setback exemption, have there been any letters or complaints on a part of any of the neighbors?
We have not heard any concerns from neighbors, no.
Regarding the setbacks, regarding any other aspect of the project?
We have not received any comments or concerns from any of the neighbors regarding any aspect of this project.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. I will open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to step up to the podium and address the commission. I have two speaker cards, so if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name's Rick Hartman. I'm with HomeTech Architecture, 619 North First Street, San Jose. I try really hard not to be in front of you guys by not breaking any rules at all, period. But this property kind of stumped me, so I was a little stuck. The two biggest things we hear is the FAR and the technically rear setback. Everybody looks at this and says, well, the back is the front and the front is the back. It's just the way it looks if you've been up there. So if you go to Oak Hill and look down, you're looking into his backyard, but that's really his front yard. And we thought about flipping the setbacks to see if that would help with some of these setback issues. But the back of the house where the front door is located, the entire wall is violating the setback today. So if you look on the floor plan, page 3, you'll see the dotted line that extends on the lower floor. You'll see that dotted line that goes across the front, well, the back, I'm not sure what it, I'm going to call the entry the front, okay? That's the original house wall. We're going to push that back to meet setback. So they're going to spend some money to make the setback violation a little bit less. But we needed to leave the front door there or the stairs wouldn't work. So that's existing non-conforming. But then if you've seen the front of the front door, it's like a bare, flat wall with a door stuck in it, and that's it. I really wanted some sort of entry element on the thing. And cantilevering doesn't really go much with this style, so we have porch posts that are an exception. So that was the reasoning behind it, is just trying hard with aesthetics to give it some sort of presence on the front. And a lot of their project is trying to make this little, simple form box front better looking than what it is today. It is a two-story, but it's a one-story split level is existing, and we're taking the lower level, which is the front door, and dropping that down to create more space under the house to get it to work for them. So it's a two-story, but it's really like one and a half story, especially when you look at the front elevation, rear, front rear elevation. But that's kind of the background for it. Lana, one of the owners is here to, I told her she should come talk to you two. She does, she just now gave me two letters of kind of approval from neighbors, which I can hand you. One is, when you're looking at the front door, there's the house immediately adjacent, like illegally too close. And she has an approval letter. And then when you're looking at the front door, there's a little tiny house right here that's also a letter.
Hi, my name is Lana Pesakovic. I am the owner with my husband Alexander. We are the owners of 26 Oak Hill Way here in Los Gatos. And, well, we bought this house two and a half years ago, mostly because we always loved Los Gatos. We live not too far away and we always drove here. And we wanted to be close to downtown so we can be in walking distance and enjoy everything that downtown has to offer, all the, all the music in the park, all the exhibitions, all the shops and stores and the wine walks and everything that we have. So, so we bought a house and we moved in here and we enjoyed it so much that a year and a half later, we welcomed a little baby boy to our house. And now we found ourselves in a position that we need more space. We love our house, we love the feel of the town, but with two children eight years apart with different genders, sharing a room is not an option. So we found ourselves that we are in need of remodeling. We need a bigger house. So we contacted Rick, who did the fantastic job designing a house that meets all our needs, that brings our 90-year-old property to actually modern codes and standards. The house will be safer, more beautiful, more energy efficient, and it will fit very nicely into the existing neighborhood. We love our trees, we have redwood and have two giant oak trees in the backyard or front yard, depends how you look at it. So we want to preserve all that, so, and the design that Rick created works very well with all that. Our neighbors like it. Our neighbors like it, and Rick just provided two letters from our next-door neighbors, which we spoke with them at length, we showed them the plans. So they are the ones who are the most impacted by the construction, and they gave us their enthusiastic support to move forward with the plans. So neighbors are happy, and we are not creating a giant, big monstrosity that will really irritate everyone. The house is still modest in size, but it does give us the space that we need for our children, we just need an extra room, bathroom, and some play area for our kids. So that's pretty much it, and I hope that when you look at the plans, you see that we really try to take into account everything that Los Gatos has to offer, we try to fit the neighborhood, and we try to kind of create a space that will be pleasing to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Lana. Questions for the speaker? Would the architect like to come back up? You still have time remaining?
I was going to mention the amount of square footage that were over the FAR is kind of the difference of the slope reduction. So if it wasn't for the slope reduction, we would just about meet FAR, it was really, really close. But that's, yeah, but it's less than the previous owner had done.
Vice Chair Kane?
In the Arborst Report, a number of trees are cited as potential impacts. And when I visited the site, standing at the back of the front and facing the house, the story poles went off into the trees, seemingly, to the right. To the best of your knowledge, those story poles, I'm not telling me that any of those trees are going to be impacted, or are they?
We're going to have some pruning, but those trees are coming from way over, from that neighbor over there, but it's really just minor pruning. The, I'm always nervous about the story poles being correct, but the roof, the ridge that's there today, the new ridge is only about two feet higher, so it's not massively higher than what's there today, but it does extend that ten feet towards that side yard.
Thank you.
Further questions for the speaker? Seeing none, I will now invite comments from members of the public. I don't have any speaker cards, and nobody is coming forward to speak on Agenda Item Number Five, so if you like, you can come back up to the podium for another five minutes. Late night? Okay, all right. Then, that being said, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and I will look to my Commissioners for any questions, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Birch?
Whatever, you two preemptive to go ahead and make a motion? Okay, good, okay. Wait, I have to find the right page. I recommend approval of site and architectural application S dash sixteen dash zero three two, 26 Oak Hill Way, requesting approval to construct a new second-story addition to an existing single-family residence and exceed the maximum allowable floor area ratio. I find the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act, as adopted by the town, shown in Exhibit Two. I can make the required findings as required by Section 29.40.075 of the Town Code for granting approval to exceed the maximum FAR, also shown in Exhibit Two. I can make the required considerations as required by Section 29.10.2653 of the Town Code for granting approval of reduced setbacks on a non-conforming lot, also shown in Exhibit Two. Make the required considerations as required by Section 29.20.150 of the Town Code for granting approval of a site, architectural and site application, also in Exhibit Two, Exhibit Two has a lot of stuff in it, and approve architectural and site application S dash sixteen dash zero three two with the conditions contained in Exhibit Three and the development plans in Exhibit Eight. And I would also like to compliment the architect and the applicant on being able to make this home much, much more attractive and more useful to your family.
Vice Chair Kane?
I'd second that motion with a compliment also to staff for providing a good report, good reasons. You probably had something to do with encouraging people to comply with the town architect, and that's always a nice thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I will call a question. All in favor? Aye. Passage unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights on the actions of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the Clerk's Office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within ten days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Item number six is 14595 Clearview Drive, 17445 Xena Avenue. Architecture and site application S dash fifteen dash zero seven zero. Requesting approval to construct a private instruction training building on property zoned RC, APN four zero nine three one zero zero one. May I have a show of hands from Commissioners who have visited the site? Are there disclosures from Commissioners? Commissioner Hudes?
Yes, I will be recusing myself from this item because I own a property in proximity to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudes. We will wait for you to leave the room before we get the staff report from Ms. Mosley. All right, Ms. Mosley?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Literally in the hot seat, it's nice and toasty over here. LaRan Canata Club is proposing to construct a new private instruction accessory structure on the south side of the driving range. The building is proposed to be five hundred and forty-six square feet and eighteen feet tall. The proposal was initially included with the proposal in 2015 along with their pump house structure that they wanted to construct to enclose the required pump equipment that was required in order to, for the irrigation equipment improvements due to the extended drought conditions in the region. The instruction building was not instructor, excuse me, the instruction building was not approved along with the pump house due to an error in the information provided by the applicant. The applicant did resubmit the proposed development application with a reduction in the height from the previously proposed nineteen feet to what you see now, which is eighteen feet. And the applicant has recently been able to provide suitable mitigation measures for the directly adjacent neighbors that back up to the property from Clearview. Additional landscaping screening will be provided to sufficiently screen the new building from those most impacted. And staff recommends that the commission approve the requested application, subject to the attached conditions. And we're here if you have any, have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Questions of staff? Vice Chair Kane?
Initially, there'd been a lot of neighborhood concerns about the project, and some people specifically very concerned about it. Are you telling me that all of those issues have now been resolved?
Those two neighbors that were involved, starting back in 2015, have communicated with staff that they are satisfied with the mitigation measures that they have agreed to with the country club.
Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
I was just wondering if you could comment on this issue of the neighborhoods, what kind of outreach had, was done either in 2015 or now?
The club is required to do an annual outreach. Mr. Prollo may be able to speak to some additional. I know they've met several times with these neighbors over the course of that improvement. They sent out some notices when they were doing the grading work that was required, but he would be able to speak to some additional as far as what they've done beyond what I know about.
Further questions? Seeing none, I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing and allow the applicant and their team ten minutes to address the commission. I don't have a speaker card in front of me. I assume you're the applicant, if you could be sure to state your name and address for the record and fill out a speaker card.
Sure. My name is Stan Prollo. I'm the Assistant General Manager and Controller at LaRan Canata Country Club. I live at 1001 Mazon Drive, San Jose, California. In answering, well, actually, Ms. Mosley eloquently stated some of the features of the teaching facility itself. A few things that I'd like to point out have to do with the fact that we've solicited golf course architect and PGA pros to assist in the design and location of the, of the structure. With this structure, it is only going to be used for individual instruction. It's a single bay, there won't be group instruction or group activity taking place in, in this structure. And all instruction will be supervised by a PGA pro hundred percent of the time. As far as the neighbors are concerned, the two neighbors that, that Ms. Mosley was speaking about are the ones that are most impacted, directly impacted by the, the structure because their backyards are basically split the difference of the, of the structure itself. And so we met with those individuals, we met with the Williams early on in the, in the project, had lunch with them, and discussed the project, tried to find, you know, means to, you know, see how we can make them happy with this structure. And then we recently had followed up with them. We walked the facility location, we took a look at their backyard, and basically what they were looking for was to have some screening, which we're happy to do. Plus, they love the look of, you know, of the back of the golf course, so we agreed to go in and we'll thin out some trees, provide, improve their view on the, the back of the driving range view, and then also put some trees and other landscaping that will assist with, you know, the shading and shielding of the structure itself. The structure is going to be of the same style and design as our clubhouse, so it's not going to be an eyesore. So we feel that it's going to, going to fit within the confines of a common look at the club. As far as the other neighbor, met with that individual, he just wanted a tree and some shrubbery and some other things that landscaping items to go in, and then we'll, you know, continue to work with these individuals, even though, you know, whether it's now or in the future, if something pops up, we're, we're more than happy to, you know, we wish to be a good neighbor, so we're going to work with you.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner Erickson?
So if I understand, the location of where the building is proposed to be is, is part of the driving range area?
Yes.
Correct. The driving, if I understand correctly, too, the driving range area spans the entire width to Wedgewood at that part of the golf course, correct?
You're correct.
Did you consider, and are there reasons why you wouldn't consider having located that instruction building on the opposite side of the driving range that would be adjacent to Wedgewood so that it would even have less impact? So therefore, it would be located, obviously, adjacent to a street and not adjacent to any neighbors?
Yeah, and we did look into that. We, one of the, the challenges is, has to do with the setback from the property line. We would, basically thirty feet, which would push out and, and impact the, you know, that side, the Wedgewood side of our driving range. In addition, we have irrigation and drainage that runs through that whole area. So we opted away from that. We felt that, you know, the seventy, roughly seventy-eight feet that we were away from the property line, we felt that that was far enough away to, you know, to basically provide the, the expansion of our driving range, plus to provide, you know, enough space away from our neighbors so that, you know, that they wouldn't be impacted by noise and things of that nature. This, this facility is enclosed, and basically, they're not getting to hear the striking of the golf ball because it's within the confines. There is a fifteen-foot roll-up door, but by the way that it's positioned, it's away from, from the homes and directing towards the middle of the, of the driving range.
Did that answer your question?
I guess I don't. You said there were drainage irrigation issues?
Correct. And, and there was also, the, the neighbor also, you know, said, gosh, if you move it twenty feet over, you know, we'd, we'd be happy with that. And, and once again, and if we were to, to move it, you know, twenty feet closer towards the center of the, of the range area, it would cost us another $20,000. So once again, in that location, we had, we had irrigation and drainage also running through that.
Yeah, no, I wasn't really talking about moving it for, closer to the center. What I was doing was, I mean, it seems like to me, I mean, my, I can tell you what my concern is when I visited the site, it's a, I have a whole different reaction if, because I actually own a piece of property that backs onto a golf course in Oregon. So I have a whole different reaction if my, from a property that backs onto the golf course, to a golf course, then backs onto a building that's not, that, that's on the golf course, if you would. So it would seem like to me, the lesser impact on the neighbors would be to put that instruction building on the opposite side of the driving range. The driving range is only going to be certain width, so if you, I guess I'm trying to understand what difference it would make if, if I take the same width off of, I don't know what direction it is, but the, the Clearview side of the driving range, or I take it off the Wedgewood side of the driving range.
It was also the recommendation of our golf course architect that that location was pristine for, for what we were looking at, for the number of hitting surfaces that we were looking to, to accomplish, that that location was, was ideal.
I know, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but did he provide some rationale for that? I mean, if I understand right, it said it's an enclosed building, so it's just going to be an enclosed building with the instructions?
Cost is a component, too. I mean, we would have to redesign the, the driving range itself.
So it's not located on the driving range where it's proposed?
That, no, the, the, the current, I mean, it's not on the, on the, the current hitting surface, it's, it's off on the side. And so for us to locate in that other area, we would have to redesign the, the driving range itself, too.
Right, you'd have to, you'd have to extend the driving range further toward Clearview.
Further questions? Vice Chair Kane?
Trying to understand the function. So there's a building with three sides of roof and a door that comes up. Is the student and the instructor inside?
Yes, they are.
And is the ball being hit outside?
The ball is hitting, being hit.
What if somebody's walking by?
I'm sorry?
What if somebody's walking by? Do you have red lights?
Oh, no, that won't happen, it's over on the, on the side, it, it won't happen.
It's, just sounds...
And, and the structure?
These white balls come flashing out of this building, I don't...
No, it, it, and, you know, other structures that are, are, you know, set up in, in the same type of fashion, you don't, you don't have any issues with regards to...
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you. I will look to the public. I don't have any speaker cards, but would anybody like to speak to us in regards to item number six? Seeing nobody? Sir, you can come back up to the podium and speak for another five minutes if you like? No? Three minutes, all right. Thank you. All right, I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Commissioners, any questions, comments, or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm going to move the approval of the architecture and site application S fifteen zero seven zero and find that the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15,303 of the California Environmental Quality Act. See Exhibit Two, and we would make the required considerations as required by 29,2150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architecture and site application, also Exhibit Two, and approve the architecture and site application S fifteen zero seven zero with conditions contained in Exhibit Three and the development plans attached as Exhibit Ten.
Commissioner Birch?
I'll second the motion.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Commissioner Erickson opposed, passes five, four to one, five to one. We're missing Commissioner Hudes, and my math is not good tonight. All right, Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights of the action of the commission on this item?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council. Forms are available in the Clerk's Office. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within ten days.
Thank you. I will be recusing myself from item number seven, as the project application is within five hundred feet of my residence. Vice Chair Kane will be presiding over the duration of the hearing. Those of you who wish to speak on this item, please complete speaker cards and bring them up to the staff member or myself before I leave. Vice Chair Kane, we will need to get Commissioner Hudes back in. All right.
This is item seven, 341 Bella Vista Avenue. Architecture and site application S twelve one oh three. Subdivision application M twelve double oh eight and negative deck, ND sixteen double oh one. Requesting approval to merge two lots and construct a new single-family residence and remove large protected trees on property zoned R one eight. This is APN five two nine, two three, zero one five, and zero one six. May I show, may I see a show of hands from Commissioners who have visited the May I show, may I see a show of hands from commissioners who have visited the site? Are there any disclosures? Ms. Mosley, I understand you'll be providing us with a staff report this evening.
I will be. As you are aware, the application was previously considered by the planning commission on both April 13th and April 25th. After sufficient expert testimony from the applicant's team and consultants of the town, the commission determined on May 25th that the technical concerns of the proposed projects, such as the stability of the slope, impacts to trees, and accuracy of the slope analysis had been adequately addressed, and that the remaining items to discuss were in regards to mass and scale, neighborhood compatibility, and privacy for the adjacent residences. The applicant has provided more information regarding the proposed reductions and modifications that were discussed on May 25th. Several of the neighbors have been able to meet with the applicant to discuss these modifications and their comments. Several of the comments from these neighbors are included in the packet materials. Additional clarification is also provided within your report, and the staff, staff and the applicant's team, including their architect, and I believe their landscape architect, maybe he's not here yet, are available to answer any questions in regards to clarification for those modifications and the privacy mitigation measures that have been proposed to be implemented within the most recent set of plans. Staff is here to answer any questions you may have. This completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner?
I wanted to thank you for the additional clarification about the floor area ratio, but I was, I'm still not clear on how the numbers came out between the hillside design guidelines and the zoning code. So I was just hoping, because it's important, because for any lot that has a slope of this severity, there's some impacts to the size of lot. So if I read the hillside design guidelines correctly, it sounded like you need to adjust the lot size, reduce it by 60% when you have this type of slope of lot. So then, then the table two that's in our hillside design guidelines, it says net lot area of 11,000 square feet or less, floor area ratio of 34.5%, allowable floor area of 3,800. So, and you said that if it was the hillside design guidelines, it would be 3,800. But my question is, why would a lot that is 11,000 square feet and a lot that's 2,000 square feet be, both be eligible for 3,800 square feet?
So that chart...
Sorry. Or did I not get that right?
So the chart is, is used a little differently than you would the zoning code, where you're really looking at a specific number. So that chart looks at up to, so even if, like, so for example, a 19,001 square foot lot would be subject to that next section of allowable floor area. We have, as far as Joel and I are aware of, ever since those were approved in 2004, we have not used the ratio. It's always been the number within the chart.
Okay, so if I, now that I, you know, understood it correctly, because what I thought it was is that you would, you would apply the 34.5% to the actual net square footage, but that's not the case. You just give them the 3,800 square feet if you use the hillside design guidelines. And so that's why you use the zoning code regulations, because it's the more restrictive of the two, and it came out to slightly under 1,500 square feet.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Mosley. I'll now open the public portion of the hearing. Allow the applicant and their team 10 minutes to address the commission. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Vice Chair Kane, members of the commission. I'm Bart Heckman, back again for the applicant, the Ross family. At the conclusion of the hearing on May 25th, as Ms. Mosley has just described, the commission reached consensus that it had sufficient information on a number of issues, including traffic, trees, and geotechnical safety, and asked the Rosses to further investigate what they were willing to do to address the visible mass and bulk of the proposed home, the privacy concerns of the downhill neighbors, and safety concerns regarding the driveway. Now, the commission asked the Rosses to invite the neighbors to meet and review, to meet to review and discuss the Rosses' further efforts on these topics, and strongly encourage the neighbors to accept that invitation when it was offered, and to take that opportunity to have meaningful discussions. So that's what the Rosses have done, and I'm going to focus our presentation tonight on the additional information various commissioners requested at that hearing, much of which you'll find in your staff packet. So here's a more detailed listing from our accounting, if you will, of the items the commission asked to be addressed. Show the widened driveway, potential turnaround in the driveway. Further address privacy related to bulk and mass. Update the landscape plans, including initial plant size, growth rates, and mature heights. Color renderings showing existing and new trees. And exhibit showing ways to limit views, and there are a list of different tools, if you will, that could be used for those purposes. And then neighbors to meet and provide input. So I'm going to lead you through a series of slides showing the Rosses' efforts to address these issues, and then the project architect can answer your questions. So just to refresh, this is the evolution of the plans in response to planning commission, neighbors, and council over the past seven years. We start with the two-home proposal that's shown at the bottom. Then we move to the very top, which was the single-home proposal that first came to you. And in the middle is the modified version that is in the plans that have been submitted in your current staff packet. As we reviewed last meeting, compared to the two-home proposal, 42% reduction in square footage of the home, a 40% reduction in the lineal feet of rear elevation, and a 46% reduction in rear elevation wall mass square footage. Now, these reductions are before consideration of the new revisions to the plans that further reduce height, bulk, mass, and square footage of the home, which I'll discuss a bit later. At the last hearing, one of the commissioners asked if we'd consider widening the driveway to allow cars to turn in the driveway and pull out headfirst. Now, before you is a reconfigured driveway that allows for onsite turnaround and nose out first. This plan also includes the widened mouth of the driveway that we had a sketch of at the last hearing, if you'll recall. It was just sort of drawn in. It's now built into the plan on the, on the right side of the driveway mouth. If the commission prefers this design to the one in the application packet, then it can be added as a condition of approval, which is acceptable to the Rosses. Regarding additional screening, we asked David Fox, the landscape architect, to provide a series of layers of landscape, screens and buffers for additional privacy. And we have included four layers in the plans. There are multiple landscape and screening elements and features of privacy that have been included. At the property line, which is at the top, if you will, at the top of the green, plantings have been added for immediate privacy. Then at the lower level of the property, planting added with green screens or the wood panels, which I believe were a prior feature, to completely eliminate views and address privacy from the lower level. And then the lower and first level of the home, I'll review in a moment, but windows have been removed or changed at the lower and first level to maximize privacy. On the roof, the north roof deck is now a planted green roof and totally inaccessible, so there's no interface issue there of, you know, people at that space looking down at the townhomes on Magic Court. We've added deep shelves and planters to eliminate downward views from the driveway area. The patio has been located at the north end to eliminate views and interaction and address privacy. And the Rosses would also be agreeable to a condition of approval requiring them to seek neighbors' input in the field as to the location and types of trees to be planted. Although we do have a full landscape plan presented to you as part of the package tonight. So here are some images of the green screen. You can see it's sort of a three-dimensional fencing material that, that green materials can go, grow through and fill out. The Rosses would defer to the planning commission on a condition of approval to include either this kind of green screening or the wood panels that were part of the prior plans. And then next, and I'm sorry for the small size of this, I know it's difficult to see from your vantage, it's difficult to see from mine, but these are images of the planting varieties proposed. Again, we're open to planning commission conditions for any additions, locations, size, type, and placement, but this is the palette of vegetation that's being proposed. The commission also asked for rendering showing existing and proposed landscaping. And you can see here the plans without planting, that's the upper row. The plans with existing and proposed, that's the middle row, and the colors are, well, the shading's a little bit difficult to see here, but the existing are these very lightest gray bulbs. Those are existing, and then everything darker is proposed. And then at the bottom, what we're showing, and I'm sorry, this looks like it's too dark to really see, but you're seeing the existing tree canopy. So let me go to the next slide where hopefully it's a little better. It's not. I'm sorry. This is actually, I'm sorry you can't see this better. So this is the existing tree canopy on the bottom, and this, on the top, is actually the house scaled to this photograph, so you can line up, you know, the house would be fitting, where you see the house in the upper, you slide it down into this tree canopy, and I think there are two large trees that I'm pointing to now that get removed to make way, to make room for that house. I'm not saying that those are the only two trees, I'm just saying that there are two very large trees that are, you can see them on the plants. So I do want to note that these images only include, for example, this drawing at the top, it only includes the plantings on the Rosses' property, and they haven't included the existing shrubs and trees on Magic Court properties, which will further screen, or they're already there to screen. So in terms of the work done to address privacy, they've removed windows, raised other windows to eliminate views or otherwise inhibit the views using privacy fins and other measures, eliminated the cantilevered bumpout, which decreased the home by 172 feet, moves the home farther away from property lines and neighbors. We covered that at the last meeting. The main living area, square foot living area, was 1278. Now it's 1106, which is 74% of the allowable max far. The 1106 main level plus 204-foot lower level of, gives you countable far of 1310, 88% of allowable, so the Rosses are not maxing development of these parcels. Sorry, so these are images that perhaps you might want to ask the architect about, because these show the before and after in the context of the screening, but I don't have time to cover them now. These are the summary of the various privacy issues, ways we've addressed privacy. You've seen this slide before. We're in compliance with everything, all of your requirements. And the final, so Lars Guy, Lars Guy is the project architect, is here. David Fox, the landscape architect, landscape designer, was supposed to be here. We don't know why he's not. We're sorry. But Terry, to answer your questions, thank you for allowing us to update you on our progress. And if any of you want to ask me about interface with the neighbors, that's the one thing I didn't have time for.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. I'm going to do something unusual before I open this up to the public, public hearing. I've gone over the latest revisions that you've submitted, and I received another batch of letters from the neighbors, and on the major points, there seems not to be any movement. We're sort of where we were with a lot of noble attempts.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your noble presentation as well, but the thing is, I don't think we're getting anywhere necessarily, and I was wondering if you'd be interested in, I would like to have your agreement on this, and I will need the agreement of the commission, but I'm wondering if you'd like to have an up or down decision? I don't see movement. I don't, I'm just wondering if I can facilitate this in any way.
We would like a decision from the planning commission, absolutely. In terms of up or down, I guess I would say if it's up, with the caveat that we're open to conditions, as I've tried to indicate in our presentation. So it's not, so we've tried not to make a take it or leave it presentation tonight.
Right.
Right? And so as long as the commission understands that, that we're open to that kind of flexibility, we've made, I think, a tremendous effort to address concerns.
I think your presentation was gracious. I don't think it's affected the bottom line of pros and cons and gray and mass and scale, which are, what's the joke about? Location, location, location. It's mass and scale, mass and scale, mass and scale.
But it's visible mass and scale. I should point that out.
I will. Did you just say no? Do you want to do a yes or no? Because I want to ask the commission what they think.
Did I? Your question was, do we want an up or down vote? And I think our answer was, was yes, we would like a decision by the commission, recognizing that we're open to conditions.
Commissioner Erickson, did you have a hand up?
Well, I guess, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure when the appropriate time for me to make the comments I would like to make are, other than the vice chair opened the door. I think the vice chair took the initiative to represent the commission on the fact that there was no progress being made, and I think that was presumptive on the part of the vice chair.
But you disagree. That's all I need. We'll go forward.
Speaker, talk.
Yeah.
So I think it was presumptive, and I think inappropriate to do.
So that's a disagreement. So we'll go forward.
And I would just jump in, just to offer that, I think, the intent, I assume, was just to get that question answered. We always were going to go through the hearing process as it typically would be done, so I assumed you were just looking for that input upfront.
Yes.
As we move through the process.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to be clear, because make sure our understandings are the same. My understanding is, normally when you say you want an up or a down decision, it basically means you either agree with us or you don't. He has told us, my understanding, if you have some changes that you would like to make, we would consider those. So it isn't up or down, because to the extent that what is before us is not necessarily what we'll wind up with tonight, saying up and down now is probably not as helpful as you'd hoped it would be. So that's just a comment on mine, not a criticism, but let's keep in mind that they seem, if it were relevant, and I don't want to prejudge this, if we came up with some conditions that, in the majority of our minds, might improve the project, if they were necessary, they would entertain those. Now, they might not accept them, but they would entertain those.
Exactly right.
Then, do we have questions for the speaker? Commissioner Birch?
So I would like for you to walk me through the neighborhood outreach. We received some letters as desk items today that sound like perhaps it didn't go as smoothly as I had hoped. So I would like you to please walk me through all the steps that you have done since our prior meeting.
I will do that, and I will confess that I haven't seen the letters that you received as desk items today. So the process, first, let me say that the process for the Rosses of gathering the additional material, landscaping plans, the images that are in your staff packet and shown tonight, that took a bit of time, because they basically had to line up behind whoever else was already in line with the contractors they use. So it took more time than the Rosses wanted. But Mr. Ross delivered, hand-delivered a letter to his neighbors, offering to meet and to receive input on the plans and the privacy measures. He was contacted by a group of neighbors early last week who wanted to meet last Wednesday, and he met with four neighbors from Magic Court last Wednesday at the Los Gatos Community Center. Because the meeting was short, set up on short notice, he didn't have copies of all the plans that have now been... the plans that have now been submitted because those plans were being finalized, they were actually being printed that night and the next morning. But at the meeting, he showed them what he had, described what else was coming, and asked for feedback. The neighbors, according to Dan, were disappointed that he didn't have complete plans with him, and they declined to offer any, any feedback at the meeting. So then he offered to hand-deliver on Thursday the copies of the plans, and meet again, and ask for email addresses so he could provide the plans electronically. The four neighbors there said they didn't want hard copies. He sent an email to the only resident who was willing to give Dan his email address, providing a link to the plans and an offer to meet last Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, or today, to review the plans, and Dan never heard back from that neighbor. So I totally agree with your characterization that it didn't go as you had hoped, I was here, I understood completely the neighborly interaction that you were looking for, and it, from my perspective, it definitely didn't happen. But an effort was made by the Rosses to get it to happen.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Holdus.
Yeah, I was curious, you showed a sheet L 1.0 in your presentation, and it appeared to be different from what we have in our packet. I just want to see that again.
Was that early on?
Early on, yeah.
Is that-
It's the landscaping plan, L 1.0, there we go.
This one?
Yes. And we have something-
Do you, do you have a colorized version or not colorized?
No, not, just not colorized, also, things seem to be different as well, so is that, is that simply that we're missing some information because it's not in color, or is this a different version that we have?
I'm not sure, let me ask, you can see on the version on the screen, oops, sorry, wrong button, it shows the revised driveway with the little turnout area, does your plan show that?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't show that gray shading of the turnout, it shows a retaining wall at approximately a right angle along that corner.
Oh.
So my, my question is, which one is correct, and if this, if it's this one, can we get a copy of that, please?
This one is, oop, doing that, sorry, this one is, the one being shown on screen is the correct, it's the updated one, it apparently came to us late. Do you have a copy yet?
It is the same as what is in, oh. Yes, so, but let me clarify, the landscaping that is provided on the L1 is the same as the landscaping shown on this, on what is, is in the PowerPoint. The difference is, is that they have overlaid the information that was provided in the addendum as far as the, the backup and the possibility for moving that wall, that is the only change that is different from, from sheet L1 in your packet, as well as the color differentiation.
So is it, so the landscaping hasn't changed since August 9th of 2015?
I can't speak to the dates that are provided on here, a lot, sometimes those dates don't change accurately, but the information that's provided here matches what is shown on the screen, just in color.
Mr. Ross is telling me you should, in your plan set, have a second landscape plan called Rev, I guess for Revision B.
L 1.0 as well?
We're going to look at our plan set.
We seem not to have that particular sketch. We seem not to have that sketch.
Dan Ross, applicant, the, what David Fox did was add a second row to this one. You see the, the smaller plants on the property line? The, right here, he did add some additional trees in this gap right here, and I thought it was in the packet, so I apologize for that, but the intention here, and part of our conversation is that to get neighbor and town input when the date comes to plant trees and shrubs based on sun patterns, shade patterns, that kind of thing, so that's something we can get to you, but-
Okay. I just want to-
The other thing we want to clarify, go ahead.
This is what you're applying for, not what's in here, is that correct?
This is the same plan, we're just able to add some colors, to show you the dark green is established trees that are there already, the lighter green are proposed new trees, and then additional shrubs along the property line.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Could I just interrupt for one moment, the confusion I have at least is, forget the landscaping, you are showing on that plan, if I read it correctly, a backup. Now maybe my fellow Commissioners have it, I don't find it in my package, forget the landscaping-
Yes.
I don't have the backup shown, so if I don't have it, it's possible we don't have it. So that's, that was my comment, now, to the extent that the latest landscaping plan may be different too, I don't think I have that, that either. So there are two things, you had begun this evening by saying you essentially had an alternate, and you really didn't care which one you did. One would allow the car to turn around and nose out.
Correct.
So I, I understood from you, you said to us, take your pick, so there would be two of them.
Yes.
So the question wouldn't be, is this your current proposal, it would be, is this one of your two current proposals on turnaround? But as far as the landscaping is concerned, we only have the older plan, I believe. But we can look and see, and if we have questions, we can ask.
Right.
And that's a good question. Do we have other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hanson.
I wanted to follow up on the, the interactions with the neighbors. I may possibly be misinterpreting things, but based on what I heard described, it sounded like that it took some time to get the revised plans, and that the neighbors never got to see those revised plans, and even though that was offered, this was like less than a week ago, so if, if it was really important to get the neighbors' input, did you consider, given how long it took to get the additional information, maybe continuing this until the neighbors had a chance to actually review it? Because I, it seemed to me from some of the letters, and, and I can't really speak for them, but that, but that they were willing to hear it, but that the information wasn't there when they were present, and so then they kind of got frustrated. So I, I just wondered if you considered, this is my question, did you consider continuing this so that the neighbors could have actually had time to review the plans?
Yes, we did, we did, but, but we felt that the, that the history of interactions, including the interactions that took place last week, made pretty clear to us that, that the neighbors weren't interested in a neighborly dialogue. They were, they had an opportunity, four of them sitting in a room, to get the plans, physical copies of the plans, Thursday morning, which, yes, it's less than a week ago, but we got the staff report even later than that. So there, there is plenty of time with people who want to engage in dialogue between last Thursday and tonight, to, to have a dialogue, and, and our, our feeling is, honestly, that it doesn't matter how long we put this off, these neighbors don't want this house, they just don't.
Okay, good.
Other questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. I'm going to open the public portion of the hearing for inviting comments from members of the audience. Yep. If you'd wish to speak to us tonight, please fill out a speaker card, and I'll begin calling two in a row, so the second person knows that they're up in a moment. Nicholas Williamson. Mr. Williamson, you will have three minutes. Can you what?
Okay, so good evening, hello. So there still are significant issues, as we've established, and the, really, the root cause seems to be the size of the house, so I just want to focus a little bit on the FAR and the role that that's playing, and the FAR and the role that that's playing in this, in this house. I mean, the FAR, we've talked about, I, I think it's less than what's in the staff report, but we can come back to that. Mr. Ross will argue that he's designed to the FAR, but usually the FAR describes living areas, and it typically doesn't include areas which are for storage and not living areas, so things like a garage and cellar are outside of the FAR because it's trying to describe living areas. Well, the lower floor of this house is quite clearly a living area, it's all a living area, bedrooms, they've got, all got patio door windows, they're facing out, even the bathrooms have got windows. Everything is living area down there, it's designed to be living area, it's not, it's not a cellar, it's nowhere near a cellar in its purpose, it's not a storage, and it should be included in the FAR. That would push the house well beyond the FAR limit. The house actually, though, has been designed to maximize square footage, which is contrary to the Hillside standard guidelines. It actually wants that lower floor area, it, it makes up more than 50% of the entire house, and it, it's very crucial to this design. Everything that's been chopped off this in the last week or two weeks or whatever it is, is keeping the inflated structure, and that inflated structure is creating bulk and mass and visibility issues, and it's, it's really not fair, it's not reasonable, and it's contrary to the guidelines. The dead space argument that comes up, it doesn't wash, because, you know, the argument gets, gets made that the space underneath the building would otherwise be dead space, but this is the wrong way to think about things. The design of the building has to solve for bulk and mass issues. If the design has a lot of dead space and a bulk and mass issue, that issue's not solved by turning the dead space into livable space, it just creates more issues, privacy issues on top of bulk and mass issues. So the whole design of this has been designed to maximize square footage, which is creating bulk and mass issues, and really, it's an abuse of the law around the cellar policy, which is actually designed, cellars are for storage, we know that, and cellars are excluded because you're not supposed to live in them. If it was truly a cellar, it would be subterranean, and people probably wouldn't choose to live down there because it would be dark, and then it would be clearly for storage. This is not, it's a livable area. So I, I just think these issues, I think Commissioner King's right, they, they're really at an impasse, and, and I, this is a very, very difficult lot, and my personal favorite, it's a sticky wicket, we heard last time, which is a peculiar phrase for this country, but it's a, it is, it's a hugely difficult lot with no LRDA, 100% of this house outside the LRDA. So it's, it's, I just think that this is, I just urge you to deny it.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Questions for the speaker? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Did you have an opportunity to look at the proposed privacy wall that they put in, and they illustrated some lines of sight in the lower part of the house? Have you seen those drawings?
I've, I've seen everything that you saw on the website on Friday evening, I saw not, I was not given anything before that, we went on-
You know, I'm just, I saw those plans fairly recently myself, and I looked at them, and I did see the attempt to deal with the concerns of looking down into somebody's house, and I just wondered, did you look at those drawings?
Yes, I did, and I, I mean, honestly, it's, it's very conceptual on paper, I, I think that the Hillside standards are a special responsibility, and hiding walls with large fences, very large fences, over 10-foot, I read in there, and then hoping that something grows on it, or even building more walls to hide walls and retaining walls to keep the plants from thriving because it's so steep. It's so conceptual that really, until the building's addressed, I don't know how the privacy issues, I think the privacy issue is secondary to the building issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holdus, did you have your hand up?
Thank you, I appreciate your, your testimony, as, as you've provided a very, I think, very, very concise and, and simple way of looking at some of the issues here, and so I'd like to maybe just draw in a little further on the screening and the landscape privacy issue, and there were some alternatives presented in terms of green screen versus wall. Do you have an opinion about that?
I don't, I don't at this, at this stage, because I think, as I say, I think, I think the building issue needs to be addressed first, and I think it's, it's very conceptual, I haven't seen any of these in real life. I have a, I mean, obviously, anything living in the hillsides, I think that should be our preference, that's, we want a rural landscape, so living's a good thing, but, you know, I have a huge living wall outside my office, and in, in three years, it's found it very hard to thrive, and my company's got a lot of resources to try and make it thrive, so that's putting a lot of burden on the owners that will come in, the occupants that will come in to try and keep something alive. On the other hand, a wall just fills me with horror, really, but I, I just say, the building issue first, and then I think privacy, I'm, privacy is very important, and I'm glad for all of your comments on privacy last time and your concern right now, but it's hugely conceptual, I know what works at the moment, and it's the very big oak trees that are in the middle, they, they provide a huge amount of privacy and protection. Replicating that is, is almost impossible once they're gone, I don't think they'll ever grow back, and I consulted my company's arborist on, on growing those things, and part of the reason they're split from the basis because it's so difficult to grow and to thrive, so.
Thank you. Other questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you very much.
Ken Loon, followed by Patrick Tillman.
Thank you. You have three minutes, give us your name and address, please. Thank you, my name is Ken Loon, I live at 156 Magic Court. I was traveling on business all of last week, so I was not able to make the meeting, my wife did make it, I think she may say something about it tonight. I think the Commission and my neighbor Nick really hit on, really hit on the crux of, of the differences between the neighbors and Mr. Ross, it's, it's the size of the building. It's huge, the model, everything looks really tiny on the model. It's not, I mean, I think you've all looked at the site, you've looked at the, at the story polls, I think at least some of you have looked at it from the perspective of Magic Court, and it is enormous. The reductions being compared to a previous proposal that was rejected of two houses. And, you know, the communication of Dan Ross, personally, I think, has been clear. I think it's been clear from our, from the neighbors' objections, I think it's been clear from comments from the Commission, at least in, in, in the previous proposal of the, of the two homes. Reduction in mass and scale, the building is still huge. The cellar does not accomplish the spirit of the Hillside guidelines, because it does not hide bulk and mass from the neighboring homes. And that's really all I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. Mr. Tillman, followed by Natalia Stolzkeya.
Good evening, Pat Tillman, I live at 150 Maggie Court, I live with Mary Badami, the chairperson. In, on February 13, 2013, at a study session, one of the Commissioners said, you have a problem I can't solve, merging the lot and having one big building is not going to happen. That's a quote, I provided that in one of my letters. But because of some of the comments at the last meeting, I need to address a few things. The authority of this panel is by virtue of Government Code Section, which kind of presupposes some consistency or consistency with the state law. One of those laws is Evidence Code 11, and it defines the words shall and may. So the folks in Los Gatos defined it theirself the exact same way, in the general rules at 18.04.020 subsection C, it was then again reiterated, that's-
Mr. Tillman, pardon me, can you get a little closer to the mic?
Sure. It was reiterated in the Hillside standards on page 10, it's exactly the same as the Evidence Code, and it means exactly what you think it means. Shall is mandatory, may is permissive. With that in mind, well, that, with that in mind, the Hillside standards on page 10 emphasize full compliance with all standards, emphasized it, they already defined it, now they emphasize it. Now, I provided a laundry list of things that are not in compliance in my April 4, 2010 letter, there's, it's privacy, cut and fill, FAR, three stories, height, bulk, mass, compatibility, and I think I heard today, I should have put it in first, neighborhood compatibility- compatibility. None of them have been addressed by their plans, they're abusing every single one of them. The Hillside standards say you must have a compelling reason to offset or to sidestep a standard. I have not heard one yet, and I haven't ever, in the last five years. Because of the comments that were made last month, I, I just, with all due respect, I, you shouldn't take these standards or the rules that we put in place so lightly, they're not, they're important to us. We bought our homes in large part based on them, we didn't anticipate this. Separate issue, we have also defined the cellar. The cellar is in 18.04.030 and in the zoning 29.10.020. That should be, it includes, when you read that, if you do, grade, finished grade, with those two, you can't say this is a cellar, you have three open sides of a 1,300 square foot building stuffed into the side of a hill. Three fully exposed sides and no courtroom will support that definition of a cellar, that's important.
Tillman, let me see if there's any questions. Seeing none, thank you, sir.
May I, there was a question, and this is a brand new issue, the explanation-
There's no question for us, Mr. Tillman.
Could I get one about the FAR, the explanation you were given was wrong, from Ms. Mosley.
Thank you.
Would you?
I shall, but I'm done with you, we're done. Ms. Mosley, do you care to comment on the FAR question?
The clarification provided earlier is the policy of the town at this time.
Natalia Stolzkaya, followed by Rob DiNapoli.
Good evening, Natalia Stolzkaya here, 152 Magic Court. As the planning commission instructed during our last hearing, I was, I'm, among other neighbors, met with the builder, asked some questions and looked at the plans for the proposed changes, also, we looked at some brochures for the landscaping proposal. In a short summary, these changes are insignificant, and the structure is oversized for the lot, and also, proposed structure significantly affects adjacent property owners' privacy because of its size. And numerous times over, over the last 10 years, everyone in the neighborhood repeatedly stated to Mr. Ross in our public hearings, and also in, in our letters to the commission, "Please construct a house that fits the size of the lot, takes into account the steepness of the hill, and doesn't violate privacy." And making the house smaller by, like, around 170 feet, which can constitute to 6% of the overall square footage, would be very appropriate for removing a small imperfection in design. But having a massive, massive house with 48% bonus space marked as a cellar is not an adjustment that we would consider appropriate. On behalf of my family, and also on behalf of other 16 neighbors that signed the petition, I would like to ask the planning commission to deny this project. Please uphold the Hillside standards, and please help to preserve the character and beauty of our town.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker, Commissioner Hootis?
Thank you. Did you have the opportunity to review the lands, the new landscape plan and the privacy plan, and do you have a preference between the different types of screening that's been proposed?
So, the house is big, and the landscaping is really a secondary option to, to solve anything with this, and, you know, behind my house, I have like small hill where I tried to, the past 10 years, I tried to grow trees, like, I bought that big tree at Costco, it's still the same size. It's, it's just very difficult land and soil and hill, and, I don't know, the, the dry years that we have in the past, it's just very, very subjective at this point, because you can plant beautiful trees, but will it grow to the same size as we have it today on a hill? I don't think so, or, you know, you cannot have 100% guarantee in that.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rob DiNapoli, followed by Dr. Coughlin?
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Rob DiNapoli, I live in, at 322 Bella Vista, directly across from the proposed site. I would like to, I'd like to talk a little bit about the 15 years I've lived there. One thing that's happened is, I've noticed in the last few years, is really coming together the community in unanimous opposition to this proposed development. In that 15 years, I've seen three homes built on Bella Vista and the continuation, which is New York Avenue, three new homes built there, and then several very significant remodels in the neighborhood, and never once has, has, do I know of any objection from the neighbors for those developments, at least nothing that, anything like what's happened here. So, I just like, I, I've seen that you have made, you have some discretion, I think two agendas ago, you made some, you had discretion in the FAR, and you allowed a few more feet to a developer, so, I'm assuming you have the same discretion to adhere to a set of rules, and in particular, the cellar, that, the cellar that is proposed there, and whether that should be included in the FAR, and the mass and size of this, of this development, and then allowing the, allowing the, basically, the living space of the whole bottom floor to be considered a cellar, I, I think that those rules should be adhered to, and, and that should not be allowed. I think the neighbors, the neighbors here would, they object to it unanimously because of its size and mass, but also traffic, the trees, the, the, the traffic and the safety issues up on top, so, there's a lot of reasons why we object to this as a neighborhood, but most of all, it's just, it's obvious with all the people that have come out unanimously in opposition to this, there's a lot of reasons to adhere to strict guidelines for the Hillside.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you very much. Dr. Coughlin, followed by Shannon Susick?
Good evening, Tim Coughlin, 320 Bella Vista Avenue. I did have a chance to meet with the applicant, and we had a cordial but brief meeting, I think we were able to converse in a spirit of goodwill. I would like to address a comment made by one of the commissioners last time about the impact of following the FAR or not following the FAR, and I think the comment was something like, well, if the house is going to be built anyway, why penalize the builder by limiting the size? Why not give that builder the benefit of the downstairs being added? I think this is my interpretation of what I heard from one of the commissioners. In other words, is it because of, because we want to penalize them, or we want to have some kind of a limitation on them for that sake? And it's not that at all. I think the, the FAR, we feel that that is, unless the town somehow gets more clarification on this cellar issue, I think we're going to have a lot of trouble if this goes through, it's going to become a precedent for other developments of this kind. And I think that, even though the FAR is mostly about how much impact this place is going to have on the environment, I think it also needs to be thought of in terms of how many people are going to be in this house? If it's a 1,400 square foot house, you might have two people in there, and maybe two cars. Now, if it's 2,400, 2,800, you're going to have four cars, you could have teenagers who are driving and so forth. So, I think it's, I think there's more of an impact here than just some kind of nebulous philosophical thing about whether we're going to penalize the builder or not. Any questions?
Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. Shannon Susick, followed by Lee Quintana. Say that again.
Hi, Shannon Susick, thank you for your time. I submitted this late today, I had sent it in earlier, a few weeks ago, to the council and a couple of the staff, and it's my formal request to review definitions that are being addressed today, and have been, also, for a review of what the DRC is allowed to approve and deny, and what should be sent to the commission. And also to consider, and I mentioned this before, creating a town land preservation fund, or something along those lines, for parcels that are so contentious, such as this In addition, I'd like to ask that this current application be denied for all the reasons presented earlier, and I'm going to address two things that I think are really important. God bless you.
And your second issue.
Let me put my glasses on, was that you? So, the removal of the heritage oak trees is something that is just so big, and I know that we had the, the, the report regarding, the geo report regarding the soil and such, but, basically, you take one or two of the largest trees, it's like taking them mom and dad from the family, and the likelihood of that stand remaining and, and, and growing or continuing to grow is highly unlikely. And those are trees that have taken 100 years. And my other comment, again, is repeating, and I don't want to, but this misuse of the cellar and basement and FAR, and just to simply state that it's within the town guidelines is not sufficient. Also, the impact on the town and the services, including the number of times that this commission and the council has to hear the same, this, this application with basically the same parameters. One other thing would be the lack of comprehension by the applicant as to the subjective nature of all of our guidelines. They're maximums, they're not minimums. And I would like to offer an idea, if the town does create such a preservation fund, that this applicant, instead of pursuing a project that absolutely no one is in favor of, donate that parcel of land, and it becomes a grove, perhaps the Ross Peters Grove, and it would be open space, it would be enjoyed by all the residents, people that walk and bike, and we wouldn't be destroying a heritage oak grove. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Ms. Quintana, followed by Mary Ann Lowden?
Lee Quintana, 5 Palm Avenue, probably going to muddle through this because I didn't expect to be here tonight, I expected to be in Oregon, things change. I think the first speaker hit it on the head, the issue is the building at this point, the landscaping is secondary. The, the main issue is the mass and scale of the, of the structure that's proposed in relation to the parcel size, its constraints, and neighborhood compatibility. It's not a numbers game, or fixing the problems caused by the development plan with landscaping. The main focus should be on the mass and scale, and the focus should be on whether it's consistent with the general plan, sellers in lieu of visible space, the Hillside design guidelines that say that you're not guaranteed the full FAR, and the residential design guidelines which say that even though the FAR is not considered in the Hillside, it, the seller, of a seller, the seller shall, and it uses shall, beak included in the analysis of the bulk and scale and neighborhood compatibility. So, that, that's what I, the basis of what I have to say. I, if I have time, I'd like to talk a little bit about the history of the in lieu of cellar and the Hillside design guidelines, how they're connected. But I would also like to say that in this particular case, it seems to me, the major thing is the width of this house. Granted, I don't think you can put a house on this side unless you set it into the hill and you have a cellar or a basement, but, the house doesn't have to be as wide. And in addition, because of the patios that are to the south, which there was testimony at the last meeting, I believe it was, that the retaining walls that are forming, that are necessary to form those patios, are not necessary for the stability of the Hillside. And the fact that they're going out, they're being graded, they're very, very tall retaining walls, that is not consistent with the Hillside design guidelines, which says that if you're going to have something like that on, on a side of the house or the rear, it's only because it will not require as much grading as otherwise. If those patios weren't there, the Hillside could be restored up to the house, basically as it normally is. In relation to the cellar, the cellar policy, I'm responsible for that cellar policy, me and two other people, we wrote it, it went to the general plan committee, they accepted it. Our intent was clearly not what is being done here and in other, on other hillsides. I hope you will ask me to finish.
Ms. Quintana, as the author of that policy, I'm going to give you 15 more seconds to summarize it. What are you trying to tell us?
I'm trying to tell you, one, that policy was written in a new section, which the, called community development in the element, that it was meant very, very literally, sellers in lieu of visible space. It was written before the Hillside design guidelines were done, and so, it was, this is important. Before the design guidelines were done, and so, we were focused mainly on the valley floor, because at that time, the Hillside, sellers in the Hillside were considered as part of the square footage and as part of the mass and bulk. So, the Hillside design guidelines wasn't done until four years later, and sellers was an issue, and-
I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you there, and see if there's any questions for the speaker.
There was post review of the Hillside guidelines that never took place, and this was one of the issues that would have come up.
Thank you. Mary Ann?
I request you to deny it.
Followed by Janet?
Hi, Mary Ann Lowden, 156 Magic Court. I wasn't going to speak tonight, I get all nervous, you know, public speaking, but I did meet with Dan Ross last week. We had planned, and, and we were communicating through Nick, so there were many, many of us that were planning on meeting with Dan Ross. And what our intention all along was to be able to review the plans by ourselves, try to understand what they were about, then meet with them and discuss them. So, what did happen was, my understanding through Nick, was he first reached out to Dan and said, "Hey, what's going on?" And then they started a communication of starting to get a date put in place of when to meet. I was on board that I was going to be part of that, so was my husband, but he ended up traveling. So, we kept getting postponed and postponed and postponed, and where were we going to have it? So, we decided on our own, that everybody agreed, including Dan, we'll meet on Wednesday, because we knew we were going to get the plans on Monday, but then they ended up being Tuesday, but then we didn't have them on Wednesday. So, then on Wednesday, we didn't hear from Dan, we didn't see any plans, we figured it was probably canceled, our plan was to meet 6 o'clock. So, no plans, I'm standing out in front talking to my neighbors, saying, "What are we going to do?" And Nick got a phone call from Dan saying, "I have the plans." And it was 6 o'clock, so we said, "What do we do?" We said, "Well, if he has the plans, let's meet him, let's pick him up, and let's get him in our hands." So, we agreed to meet at 7:15, that's when Dan said he could meet us, he would bring the plans. We arrive, we meet, no plans. So, we do continue to talk to him, and then he says, "All right, I'll have them for you tomorrow on your doorstep." Well, some of the neighbors wanted them electronically, but he just still committed to have them on our doorstep, and he said, "I'll also give it to you electronically." So, that's Wednesday. Thursday, no plans, Friday, no plans. So, Friday late, we were out of town already for the weekend, and that's when we were notified that the plans were online, and we could review them, and then he continued to communicate with Nick to say, "Do we want to meet?" Well, no, at that point, no. So, you have any questions?
Any questions for the speaker, Commissioner Hootis?
And then he continued to communicate with Nick to say, do we want to meet? Well, no, at that point, no. So, you have any questions?
Any questions for the speaker? Commissioner Hootis?
I understand, issue you raised is to your inability to review the plans. I wanted to just ask you a question. Have you reviewed the new landscaping privacy screening that's been submitted?
No, I have not.
And if you had time to, would you?
I would review it, but, you know, my biggest issue isn't, doesn't have to do with the landscaping, and that's mostly what we talked about, was, you know, he showed us his brochure from his archi, from his landscaper, and we talked about different plans, but we really couldn't address. He kept asking me and others, what did I want him to do? And I wasn't prepared to answer that question without knowing what was in front of me, because we saw the same plans we saw at the last week, the last hearing. There was nothing new to look at till today, and today they look very minor to me.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
My understanding at the moment, telling you so you can correct me if I'm wrong, is really the plans don't make a lot of difference, because what I've heard objections basically is, this is too big.
Correct.
So unless it were a really substantial reduction in the size, mass of the house, you know, moving it here and moving it there, my perception is, people are saying, it's just too big.
Yes.
Is that a fair reading of what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Alright, thanks.
The plants are not the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, Janet Carmona, 160 Magic Court. The applicant continues to compare his application to Magic Court Townhomes. Per Exhibit 20, he has provided a letter comparing his application to the Magic Court Townhomes, and emphasizes that size should be considered for the neighborhood compatibility. I completely agree. And so do other 62 immediate neighbors, who see the difference between apples and oranges. Living space of 2,720 square feet is almost double the space of a single Magic Court Townhome. Also, again, it is shaped like a shipping container stuck on the side of a cliff, with modern architecture that does not relate to any of the homes in the neighborhood. Again, this home is not compatible. Furthermore, any landscaping, if viable, will take 10 to 20 years to take effect. Magic Court has no control to maintain or nurture plant growth, which is unlikely to grow at the base of a steep slope. And drought conditions continue to limit use of water. I happen to be on the landscaping committee for Magic Court, and can provide firsthand experience that the soils are not conductive for plant growth. Landscaping is not a viable option to mitigate mass, bulk, and scale of this application. I also wanted to, wanted to point out, the FAR calculation on page 28 of the Hillside Standards, column 1 multiplied by column 2, you get column 3, and it's rounded off to the nearest hundredth. Just wanted to point that out. Please uphold the values of our town and deny this application.
I was finding page 28. Are your remarks completed?
Yes.
Questions for the speaker? Seeing none, thank you. I will now invite the applicant and his team to speak to us for up to five minutes. Additional information, rebuttal, as you will.
Thank you Vice Mayor Kane and members of the Commission, Bart Heckman. Rebuttal. At first, I neglected to specifically point out the model that's in front of you that was designed at some significant expense, and I understand flown in today to try to give you a three-dimensional perspective of scale of the house in relation to the neighborhood and in relation to the vegetation, existing and proposed. And this is something that could be passed among the commissioners, that's terrific, thank you. So I didn't want to let that pass. I also wanted to focus a little bit on these slides, which I hope are in your packet, because these show a lot of the images of the perspectives of the house as proposed to be designed, set into the vegetative cover. And I do think vegetation is very important, because when you talk about mass and scale, you are talking about visible mass and scale, right? A 100,000 square foot building that is entirely underground, you don't have mass and scale concerns like we're talking about here, because what we're talking about is what you see. That's the, that's the issue. And so, I think the screening is very important. Another point that I neglected to mention, I think it's in your papers, is that the windows, the windows have been moved in the portions of the house that do have sort of a straight view to the townhomes, those windows have been raised up, so now that the sill is at six feet. So that means somebody standing in the room I'm pointing to here at the corner cannot look out, cannot look out and down. They can look up at the sky, but not down. It's interesting, what we've, what you've heard is a request that you apply the rules. And it's odd for us to hear that from the neighbors, because that's what we're asking you to do too. This town has a set of ordinances that tell you what can be built, and what the regulations are in terms of size, setback, and as shown in your staff report, we meet those rules. We comply with all of the requirements. We don't require any variances. Now, I realize that ideally, for this commission, like any commissioner or council, you want to find a solution that, if not a win-win, it's livable for everybody. Everybody can walk away grumblingly accepting it. Occasionally, though, you have situations where you can't produce that result by encouraging dialogue, and those are frankly the hardest cases for decision-makers, because you have to make a decision, you have to apply the rules of the town. And I'm afraid that tonight is one of those nights where you have that hard decision. I think that, from the perspective of the neighbors, I understand that perspective. When I, when I look at the mapping, as someone who didn't know the history, I would have thought that this hillside was actually part of the parcel down below, the townhouses. I wouldn't have been at all surprised if, you know, in a different world, that's what somebody had said. This is our townhouse, and we own that hillside, right? It's part of what the developer bought when he built this. But that's not the case. That hillside is private property owned by somebody else, and it has development rights. Today, as two parcels, we're proposing to merge and make it one parcel. And we're going to, we're asking that you apply the rules and allow that development. We're asking that you recognize that the kind, that the only home that would satisfy these downhill neighbors and make them feel like you had, that they had prevailed in convincing you, is a home that's unrealistically small. They don't want to talk about landscaping, their only focus is to shrink the house further, and I think that's the reason that the dialogue was unsuccessful. Because the house is small. It's, and it's, it's 88% of what's allowed, it's even smaller, so we're not even maxing that. So, again, the architect is here to answer more questions, if you, if you want to dig down into the design, but we ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heckman. Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn to my commissioners for any questions, comments, or motion. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to throw out some thoughts, because I'm really, I find this very difficult. And I think the difficulty starts with the lot. It's a very, very difficult lot. And then, my memory serves, they came in with two houses, and we, somebody, I don't want to say we, but somebody suggested that maybe it'd be better if there were one house. And I think that was a good suggestion, but now we're at a point where I don't see how these people can put any house, one house, on both lots that will satisfy it, and I don't mean this in a critical sense, I can't imagine they could build a house there that would satisfy the downhill neighbors. And then you say, well, where does that leave us? And then you say, well, they've got two lots, and they have a right to build two houses. Now, what the houses look like, I don't know, and we don't know, although we had some previews. I just find it hard to believe that anybody's ever going to build one house or two houses there, that the people down the hill are going to think is okay. I mean, realistically, one could build a tiny house, I guess. And that very much concerns me, because if we believe, as I guess I do, that the owner of that property has a right to build a home, it doesn't get me home. It doesn't get me home, because it doesn't tell me what the home should look like. I can agree with the neighbors that if I were living downhill of this, it's going to look big. Now, they have done a lot of things, and they've, I think the line of sight things they did, I think that probably would work, as far as looking down into people's houses. But the reason I'm saying all this right now is, I really am grasping, and I'm looking to my fellow commissioners for some of their thoughts, because I don't see a solution perhaps even makes me happy. I mean, you know, we've got to make some decision, and I don't know what it is. Tonight, we'll, we can make a decision, but that's why I'm looking for comments from my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hanson?
I agree with several, most of the things that Commissioner O'Donnell said. There's probably not a design that is going to satisfy the neighbors. Having said that, though, I'm particularly troubled with a house where over half of the square, usable square footage of the house is in a cellar. And I feel bad for the applicant, because of our policies, he was directed to look at a cellar, but the intent of the cellar policy was to add square footage without visible mass. And since that's at the bottom, and that's what the people from Magic Court are looking at, there's just no way that those two things can work together. So, I don't know what the right thing to do is, but it seems to me that if the house were more in line with the actual FAR without the benefit of the cellar policy, that would at least be a big step in the right direction. And again, I do feel bad that our cellar policy is encouraging applicants to go in this direction, because clearly that's causing a problem with the visual bulk and mass. And I do hope that the town will be reviewing this soon.
Thank you. Other comments? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Just going back to the cellar policy, I, the application that I recall of the cellar policy over the years, that we've dealt with the cellar policy, we always said, cellar reduced the bulk and mass. That may have been wrong, that's kind of what we thought. And this one doesn't do it. And staff, I think, has told us, yeah, but it meets the definition. So then, you say, well, golly, if it meets the definition, what was the point of it? I mean, I think most of us had the view on flat land, that a cellar is kind of, mostly subterranean. This thing necessarily can't be that way. And staff says, well, but that still fits the definition. And then, I personally say, it may fit the definition, but was never my understanding of what the cellar policy was. And then you get into the wonderful legal argument, who cares what my understanding is? What does it say? But I have really trouble enforcing a rule or a law that has never, in our, in our application of that law for a long time, I think we thought it reduced bulk and mass. And if we were wrong, nobody ever bothered to say, you're, and I'm not blaming staff, because I don't have any question about what your expertise, I'm just telling you from a human standpoint, as a commissioner up here, I always thought cellars were to reduce bulk and mass. And now, we're presented with a situation where through no fault of the applicant, I don't think it does it. Now, maybe it does it a little bit, but I don't think it does much. So that's, I wanted to say.
Well, you know, Commissioner O'Donnell, you and I have been here longer than most of them anyway, so, maybe. And the author told us, and that's what I remember as well. Commissioner Hootis?
I do think the cellar policy is a key part of this, this issue. I do think in many, many cases, particularly where a home is on the hillside, the cellar policy does reduce the bulk and mass. But that's not in a situation where you have windows adjacent to the property looking right at that cellar. So, what my question really is more of a legal one, do we need to couple the actual language of the cellar policy to the intent of reducing bulk and mass? Is there anything in the hillside guidelines that draws that connection, and that if, for instance, the cellar policy did not reduce bulk and mass, then we would not have to follow?
Yeah. For the attorney.
No. The answer is no.
Is there anything that ties the cellar policy to bulk and mass?
No, there is not. So you can independently determine that the bulk and mass is the issue, as opposed to the cellar issue, and not have to deal with the cellar issue because of the open interpretation? And that's the issue that we still have to deal with at a later day?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
One, you know, we're raising legal issues, and one of the things that I've observed in a long time, a long time, is called gloss, when you apply a law, and it says everything is black, and if for 50 years, everybody said that really meant everything was red. At some point, the gloss on the reading of that statute supersedes, my judgment, and I think a lot of courts would support that. Now, I can't say that happened here, but I just find it odd, and I've been on this commission now for hundreds of years, it's the fourth term. And I honest to goodness thought we always applied that as bulk and mass. Now, you can tell me the clear language of the ordinance is contrary to that. And I couldn't say you were wrong, but all I can tell you is, for the last 14 years, or whatever it's been, I can't multiply, that's not what we did. And at some point, what we did, I think supersedes your reading of it. I'm not, I'm not there yet. I'm just saying, if in fact it's true that we have consistently applied that to mean reduction of bulk and mass, I think Commissioner Hughes is right, maybe it does reduce something here. But in my simple-minded recollection of all this over the years, we were trying to encourage people to put a cellar in, that they were building these big houses, and then they'd put a cellar in, and they'd still build the big houses. And we said, what's the point? So we had a lot of discussions over this. And now, everybody's saying, yeah, but don't worry about that. And I guess I do worry about that.
But I think the...
Go ahead.
I think we might be confusing what I was trying to interpret and what you are. I'm not saying that the cellar policy and the intent of that was to reduce bulk and mass. What I was saying is that we have traditionally, in the hillside, used a cellar calculations on that four-foot wall part and used it for the FAR calculations. We have consistently done that, and haven't had to deal in the hillside with the mass and bulk issue. So on the mass and bulk issue, I see differently, but we have always counted cellar. I mean, I think there were some comments, the fact that, well, a cellar shouldn't even be used for housing purposes, it's just for storage, and that's not true, that we've never interpreted that way either. But certainly, no. The cellar policy, I believe, and that's how most towns and The cellar policy, I believe, and that's how most towns and cities did it, the reason why you do that is to reduce the bulk and scale above and hopefully you can have living space behind. Unfortunately, in the hillside, usually when the cellars occur, you can't put them all underground. So there's some exposure to that. And we have done the calculation on far traditionally, just like we've done on this one on all previous. And Joel might weigh in a little bit.
Let me just say this, that you're almost in a, you should be able to say a no man's land. I guess you say a no person land now because I think we've applied this, I don't disagree with what you said at all about far, but as far as bulk and mass. So we've done that. And now we're trying to apply it to the hillside and we're saying, whoops, that's a real problem because most of this is not really submerged, hardly at all. And yet we say, well, you have to give some credence to the cellar, but it ought to make a difference when you look at it. And I, you know, I'm not an architect and these guys have been working quite hard at it, so I don't know what they can do. But I sure like to see less impact on the bulk and mass. And I would like to think that the cellar policy doesn't take that away from us. And, but I mean that narrowly because you can say bulk and mass no matter what the cellar policy is. But I partly feel like the cellar policy should not be used in these cases on a steep hillside as an argument against the bulk and mass being too great. And I don't think you disagree with that.
I don't either.
If I could maybe make another comment. Commissioner Hanson pointed out to me the language in Resolution 2002-167, which I'm going to take into consideration when I look at this cellar issue. And it says, you know, whereas the general plan encourages the use of basements and cellars to provide hidden square footage in lieu of above-ground visible mass, policy LP 21. And then it goes on, this is the preamble to the actual cellar resolution. So I believe that the intent is laid out here that the cellars are used to encourage reducing visible mass. And I'll take that into consideration when I think about that part of it.
Thank you. Questions, comments, a motion?
Well, I'm going to make an attempt at this because, to be honest, I feel that this could probably spin for a very long time if allowed. So I think in light of probably allowing this to just move forward, I'm going to make a motion to deny architectural site application S-12-103, subdivision application M-12-008, and negative declaration N-D-16-001. My thought being that we are not finding a way to make this property compatible with the adjacent neighborhoods. Clearly, there's an issue with bulk and mass and whether we tie that to the cellar or not, I'm going to actually leave that alone. I think that's a separate issue that we need to probably look into further. And I just feel that at this point, we could painfully drag this on for a long time and I think it's time that we don't.
I will support the second, therefore.
I will second the motion. I just want us to all realize that I don't want to be sitting here a couple of months looking at two houses. But if I were the applicant, darn well that might occur. But that's neither here nor there. I mean, we just have to do what we think is right, what we have before us. That has bothered me because I think they've spent an inordinate amount of money and time and I'd be very frustrated were I in their shoes. And I might say, okay, you don't want one house? I've got two of them. But that's their problem and not my problem at the moment. So I do support the motion.
We have a motion seconded discussion. Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted to make a comment on the point that you brought up, Commissioner O'Donnell. I can't say for sure, this staff would have to say, but based on the constraints of the lot, if they have, if they come back with two houses, they're going to have to be much smaller than this existing one. And the proposal that was made years ago did not get approved. And so whatever those numbers were, you know, and I think it was in the applicant's own letter, I had saw something about how they were directed by staff to look at houses that were in the range of 800 square feet. And therefore, they would be looking to, and I remember reading this in the letter today, they would be looking to add a cellar. And so it might be back to square one on this cellar policy, but nonetheless, I mean, I would imagine even a two-house proposal is going to be looking at much smaller footprint for either house in order to comply with the guidelines.
Thank you. Commissioner Erickson.
For the first time in eight years of service on the Planning Commission, I find myself in the challenging position of needing to abstain from the motion. My understanding from the motion, my understanding of the protocols of the Planning Commission is that if you abstain from a motion, you have to state the reason for abstaining. My reason for abstaining is I believe that we did not conduct a fair public hearing this evening. Prior to the public hearing portion, the public testimony portion of the public hearing, Vice Chair Kane, who was chairing the commission, stated that no progress had been made and then asked the applicant. So what he did, in my judgment, is he stated the conclusion of the very nature of what the hearing was about tonight before the hearing occurred and before the commission was given a chance to deliberate on the merits of the case. So we have a duty, in my opinion, to actually provide a fair hearing to the applicant and to members of, and to neighbors and interested parties and members of the public. In my opinion, when you state the conclusion of the very question posed by the hearing itself, I cannot understand how one can conduct a fair hearing. So therefore, I will need to abstain.
Other discussion. Seeing none, I'm going to call.
I have nothing but the greatest respect for Commissioner Erickson, but let me just say this, my own personal vantage point. I don't believe what the vice chair said today influenced my deliberation at all. Now, maybe that's like unringing the bell. So I'm not arguing with you. I'm trying to consider your comments and think it through. So without commenting on that, I can't imagine if you said it or didn't say it, I would have approached this matter in any different way. So I just at least want the record to reflect my belief. Whether it's correct or not, I don't know. It's my belief.
Mr. Kane, did you take into consideration, and I had all the evidence presented, all the witnesses that spoke before you reached a decision?
Yes.
Fair hearing was held. I'm fine with the legal conclusion on that.
I also talked to the Director of Community Development and Town Council before I did what I did and told them my reasons for it to see if I could expedite something. And then that's why I did what I did. So.
I would suggest you read the record again, Commissioner Erickson, that there was a completely fair hearing made tonight.
I don't want to get into a debate with the town attorney. You don't work for me, you work for the council. I don't want to get into a debate with you. But I would be hard pressed for you to conclude that before there was public testimony tonight, that he could have taken into account all of the things. But I'll leave that to your bosses.
Could I just have one clarification? When the vice chair says he talked to the town council, that might be a Brown Act violation, I suppose.
No, he talked to me and his town council.
Oh, spelling council differently, okay.
And his question was whether he should ask the applicant, whether he could ask the applicant whether they want a decision up or down. That was what he was trying to get to, to find out whether his decision, wanted an up or down decision. He was not preconceived on this and he waited till all the evidence was done and the record will be quite clear by the deliberation that occurred and the questions were asked for the last two and a half hours that he did not have a preconceived notion as to how he was going to vote on it.
Commissioner Hootis.
A comment on that. I also felt that the comments were prejudicial. However, I felt like I was able to put them aside and continue to hear the deliberations. And so I don't feel I was unduly swayed by those comments, which frankly, I also felt were prejudicial.
All right. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining? One, two, three, four, five. We have five ayes and one abstention. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, sir. From the Director of Community Development, do we have a report for us tonight?
Briefly, last evening, the council took on two appeals that the Planning Commission heard. The first was 126 Clover Way. The applicant provided revised plans and reduced the square footage and the architectural style prior to council consideration and they granted that appeal and approved the architectural site for that. The second one was the conditional use permit for Soul Cycle. That went forward and they determined, they appreciate on both cases, the Planning Commission's deliberations and determined that in that case, that it was a policy that was something that they should consider. And so that was the finding for granting that appeal. And they also added some additional conditions and some, specifically a condition to do a review to make sure that parking is addressed and that we continue to work with adjacent tenant spaces. Lastly...
How was the parking addressed? Was specific guidance given or remedies to come in the future?
The parking as currently required by town code is what was used. There was a request for, I believe, six months, and I'll look to town attorney, that after six months, that the actual, a review come back before the Planning Commission so we give an opportunity to adjacent tenants to provide input.
Thank you. That sounds reasonable. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Wasn't there a 30-minute? We were concerned about the back-to-back classes. Rumor has it that they addressed that issue.
During the middle of the day, from 11 to 4 p.m., they did add an additional time gap between the normal 15 minutes that they will otherwise have during the rest of the day.
So that was a positive step they took besides coming back.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And lastly, they also adopted a entertainment policy, which we will be looking at, which will allow folks to have entertainment up until 10 p.m. as long as they're in compliance with the noise ordinance. And there's conditional use permit. There may be conditional use permits where they are currently not allowed specifically to have entertainment and those will come back before the Planning Commission so that they can weigh in on that issue specifically, not opening the entire conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Are there commission matters for many of the Commissioners? And this meeting is adjourned.